Thank you, ma'am. We have recorded. I do want to apologize for my tardiness. I got caught up in accident traffic in two separate accidents this morning, so I hope everybody's okay. But again, my apologies, I'm the vice chair and everyone in the room. So is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
No objections. That action shall be taken. We will forego public comment, member vice chair, if that's okay with you, to allow us to move into the agenda. We have a nine o'clock public, continued public hearing. With the parties who participated, please come forward and take your place before the committee. This proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to allow the business colleges and commercial trade schools by right in our five zoning classification. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you'd please introduce yourself for the record.
Jamie Murphy, CPC staff.
Good morning, ma'am.
Matt Walters, mayor's office.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Why is this not working?
Have a brief presentation for us. You want to just-
Very brief.
Get right into it?
Just a couple of slides. So this is the first of two related proposals this morning before you. This is a text amendment to allow business colleges and commercial trade schools by right in the R5 zoning district. So post-secondary educational facilities are treated differently in the ordinance. They're divided into two categories. There's educational institutions, like colleges and universities, and then there's business colleges and commercial trade schools. One is allowed in residential and commercial but not industrial. The other's allowed in commercial and industrial but not residential. I know that's a lot of words, so here's a little graphic that makes it more apparent. You can see that business colleges on the first line, you can't have them until B3 district, and then educational institutions you can have all through the R and B districts. So if you're opening a college, there's a lot more places to do it than a trade school. And that's, that becomes important because recently, trade schools have become a lot more popular. It's a good alternative to a four-year college degree. They're usually faster, they're cheaper, a lot of times the job prospects are better. So we really need more in the city to improve access for detourers, improve employment opportunities. So R5, the R5 district, even though it's medium-density residential, it includes a lot of uses, residential and commercial. A lot of them are pretty intense, like hospitals, hotels, substance abuse, emergency shelters. A lot of them draw a lot of traffic. They're 24-hour operations, whereas business colleges and commercial trade schools are more of like an office-type use, usually more daytime. They can be more intense, like there's truck driver schools, which we're not allowing in an R5, but most of them are pretty benign barber, cosmetology, even carpentry, which we're talking about today. As you're aware, there's a number of approval criteria for text amendments. I won't go through them all, but the main one that comes out in this condition is whether the proposed amendment corrects an error or meets the challenge of some changing condition. So trade schools have become a lot more popular. We need to allow them in more areas. There was a tax amendment last year to allow them in the SD4 by right, so we may see more in the future to allow them in maybe a B2. And then City Planning Commission considered this last June and recommended approval on June 7. That is the end of my presentation for that one.
Thank you. We'll go to questions now, member vice chair. We've seen this for some time now.
Just how does this impact other residential locations or other schools coming in?
We don't have any specific proposals, I don't think, for other, but they'll have a lot more places to choose from now. I, we get a lot of requests where in B2, I know, and they're not allowed, mostly because it's more of like a small-scale district, and I think that a lot of times these are larger uses.
Okay. And for me, one of the upsides of having a conditional use is allows the public to have an opportunity-
Right.
-to comment on this. So what type of community outreach has been done to ensure that the community has its ability to be heard prior, with by right, there's, there's no requirement for community input? So where's the community input been on this proposed deal?
And this specific one, are all trade schools and res-
This specific, this specific one.
There has been a community meeting with the Tuxedo Project that is two blocks away that is managed by Mr. Stephen Henderson, and there's going to be continued community engagement over the next several months.
Okay.
Block clubs have been notified, and different nonprofit organizations that represent the community have also been engaged to talk about the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And my only other question is, why were these, why were trade schools zoned out, so to speak, back in the past? What was the methodology behind the thinking to not allow it?
I think just fear of the unknown, like, because there is such a wide range, like, you never know what it's gonna be. And it's hard to divide them into more categories.
Gotcha.
Makes it even more difficult.
Okay. All right. I have no other questions. Is there anyone from the public who would like to provide public comment regarding the 9:00 AM public hearing? Going once, twice, three times. Public comments are closed. Colleagues, is there a motion to send to formal with a recommendation to approve?
So moved.
With no objections. That action shall be taken. The nine o'clock public hearing is now closed. We now bring to order the 9:10 AM public, continued public hearing. This is for the proposed ordinance to amend chapter 17, District map 56. Same, same topic, same issue. What's the difference between this public hearing and the one we just had, Ms. Murphy? Can you introduce yourself again for the record?
I'm Jamie Murphy, CPC staff.
I'm Matt Walters, mayor's office.
Thank you.
So that was a text amendment, and this is a map amendment, or rezoning, for the former Tappan School site on the west side of the city. It's a request from the Planning and Development Department. Here's the location in the eastern part of District 7. Here's a little bit closer view of it. You have the I-96 freeway just to the west of the site, Elmhurst at the north, Laverne just to the east, and then Grand River just to the south. Here's the existing zoning of the site. You can see it's almost all R5 right now. The northern two-thirds or so is R5, and then we're just proposing to make the lower third, which is R2 and R3 right now, R5 also. You can see the surrounding zoning is all R2 and R3, except across the freeway, it's industrial. So the existing zoning districts are low-density residential. They allow single and two-family townhouses, multifamily, but no commercial uses. The proposed zoning district, R5, allows both residential and commercial. We just talked about all the things that are allowed, hotel, motel, hospital, nursing home. Here's some views of the subject property. This is last summer, so it looks much greener than it does right now. So this is the whole site with the freeway in the distance. And then this is the other side looking back towards the neighborhood. And then this is off American Street. The site is behind us, and you can see the houses that are closest. There's kind of a mixture of well-maintained houses and occupied houses, and then some that are boarded up, a couple that are burned out. This is the corner of Burlingame. And then this is the house that abuts the property to the south. Last summer, it looked pretty good. There was a window missing, but now it's boarded up.
So it's not occupied?
No. This is across the street to the north. You can see the site to the left that we're proposing for rezoning, and to the right is some little multifamily dwellings. And the planning considerations for this proposed amendment, the master plan designates the site as future, sorry, low-medium-density residential. Planning and development determine the rezoning to be in compliance with the master plan. The approval criteria for a map amendment, I won't go through them all, but whether the proposed rezoning will have an adverse impact. Obviously, this proposed zoning district allows more intense uses than existing, but will also encourage redevelopment of this long vacant site, encourage further economic development. This site is located right adjacent to the freeway, so it makes it more appropriate for a more intense zoning district. Development can serve as a buffer between the freeway traffic and the neighborhood. And then whether or not this is an illegal spot zone, it's already R5, most of the site, so we're just expanding it a little south, so it's not an illegal spot zone. And then the City Planning Commission reviewed and approved, recommended approval of this last June also. That's the end.
Ma'am clerk, if you can please note that we've been joined by member Lila. Good morning, member Lila.
Morning.
Thank you, ma'am. Colleagues, any questions?
I do have a question.
Vice chair.
The chair, if you could go back to the zoning map, please?
Sure. The zoning map.
Yeah. And so, we're looking to do basically the frontage along I-96. Why not just take R5 all the way down along the border there and be bounded by, well, I'm not sure what street that is, but to be bounded on the-
Grand River, Grand River?
Well, no, no, on the east, Elmhurst to the north, and then wherever street that is, to the east of the R5 rezoning?
American.
American, and then the alley.
Why not allow American to be the buffer and take, or the border and take R5 all the way down versus just taking a little tiny chunk of the American and Burlingame? Why don't you just take it all the way down? That's like a, it's a little pie-shaped lot anyway. I mean, why?
I think because the city doesn't own that. It's a private owner.
There's single-family homes.
I think it's vacant, isn't it?
No, they're going down American Street?
Um, the part, chase it to the freeway is, this part is vacant.
Oh, that part's vacant, yeah.
There are homes on this part.
There are single-family homes on that side, yeah.
That would have been an option. It could have gone either way.
Is it too late for that?
We'd have to renotice it.
Okay.
Sorry. We'll keep it in mind for future, because you're right, split zoning like that in the block, it, it's hard to keep track of, and yeah, it's messy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Member Lila?
So CPC, you are responsible for the notification and the information gathering for getting residents' information about whatever's coming before the city as it relates to a certain buffer area around. Can you talk about the process that you guys utilize to get the notice out about this?
Generally, we do a mailing for 300 feet to all the residents and property owners. In this case, because it was such a big development, the mayor's office and the Department of Neighborhoods handled like the actual community outreach, like meetings and stuff. A lot of times, we partner with the applicant.
So can you be a little more specific? When it came to the rezoning aspect, you all sent out notices from CPC, correct?
Right, yep.
So can you talk about that process, not, not the mayor's process, or whatever, like just your process?
So everything within 300 feet of the property lines to every parcel with a structure on it gets a notice, and then if the property owner is different, then they also get a notice. I can get the number of that if you want to know how many notices we sent out.
Yeah, I just, and then also, I'd be curious to see how many came back as well.
Hmm. It's usually around 60 or 70.
And this issue came before CPC, when, when did it come before you guys?
Last June, June 8. The mailing list that went out was 87, and there were 22 returned.
And so then, and then what happens when you get those 22 returned?
Then we strike them for the list so that the clerk doesn't send out those to the, for the next hearing.
And so, do you think those would be vacant structures, or did the folks-
Yeah, because we send it to every parcel with a structure.
You don't send it like by the name?
What do you mean?
You don't send, you send it to names, or you just send it to the actual-
Generally occupant, just because if it's to the name, and it's, somebody has moved, and it's somebody else living there, we want to reach whoever's living there, whereas if it's the name, it would just come back if somebody else was living there.
And on June 8, when this came before CPC, what was the, what was the turnout like?
There was nobody that spoke for either, except for one person that kind of spoke on the spur of the moment, just because he was really interested in trade schools and wondered how to get one in his neighborhood.
Do you have documentation, or anything that was submitted regarding any, any comments?
I don't think so, no. Was anything on this one?
It was just, it was just public comment, more or less?
Yeah.
Okay. Was, was there any, any discussion about any buffering, environmental buffering going on being the proximity to 96?
We didn't specifically discuss that because it is a rezoning and not site plan review, but they originally did ask for a B4 zoning district. We felt like that wasn't really appropriate because it doesn't require any setbacks. They could build right up to the property line, which is kind of why we wanted to keep it as R5, which requires like a 20-foot front setback, 30-foot rear. There's a formula for the side. It's usually 10 or 15 feet, depending on the size of the building, but that seemed a lot more appropriate in that location rather than building right up to the property line and maybe towering over the neighboring structures.
All right, so I just, you know, I certainly support the project. I always love, like to see the, the green buffering along, along 96, just with the heavy traffic that we're seeing, and, you know, whatever we can do to help the residents in that, in that area.
Right. It will require a site plan review just based on the size of the development, so when that happens, whoever is reviewing it in Planning and Development or B seat, I'm not sure who's doing site plan review right now, but they could look at the buffering and prioritize that.
Through, Mr. Walters?
Through the chair.
Chair.
Through the chair, the Carpentry Organization Union has also committed to putting trees up and down the service drive to, to make that buffer. Now, we might encourage more buffering when it goes through site plan review, but there is the upfront intention by the organization to comply with, with your point and your direction.
Well, what a great project. So thanks for your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions. Is there anyone from the public who would like to provide comment on the 9:10 continued public hearing? Going once, twice, three times? Public comment is closed. Colleagues, is there a motion to send to formal with a recommendation to approve?
So moved.
With no objections, that action shall be taken. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The 9:10 continued public hearing is now closed. On to unfinished business line. Item one, status of Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to request for an update on the status progress of the Packer Plant Project and the benchmarks set forth in the development agreement. Colleagues, response was provided. We did have an opportunity to speak to Pro Tem's office, and she's requesting to receive and file. Is there a motion?
So moved.
No objections. Item one shall be received and filed. Colleagues, if we can, please take line items two and 21 together. They are connected. Line item two, status of Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to request for right-to-council ordinance update and funding recommendations. Drop down to line item 21. That is Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to request to refer the draft right-to-council ordinance to the Planning and Economic Development Standing Committee. We did, again, have an opportunity to speak to Pro Tem's office. Is there a motion to, unless there's any discussion, receive and file line item two and refer to the Law Department line item 21 and bring back in two weeks. Is there a motion to first refer line item, I'm sorry, to receive and file line item two?
So moved.
Seeing that no objections, that action shall be taken. Line item 21, is there a motion to refer to Law Department and bring back in two weeks?
So moved.
And just, Mr. Chair, is-
Member vice chair?
Nope. Nope. So motion.
First was the, yeah, was the status, and then, yeah. No objections. Line item 21 shall be brought back, shall be referred to Law Department and brought back in two weeks. Line item three, status of Council President Brenda Jones submitting request of Detroit Sound Conservancy for temporary historic designation for Bluebird Inn located at 5021 Tyrman. Is there a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Thank you. Dr. Chapman?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
The, as you may recall, the building was up on the demolition list. The appropriate departments and agencies has been notified. It has been taken off the dangerous building list, and at this point in time, the building has not transferred, the ownership has not transferred as of yet. We are awaiting a, a request for the local designation, and then we will move forth as soon as we receive that, that request.
Okay. So what's the, how long do you expect that to be?
The Director, the head of the Detroit Conservancy is here, and he was gonna speak during public comment to, to address that, but I'm assuming fairly soon.
So are we talking two weeks, three weeks?
No, we're talking, no, we can bring this back, because we're, once we receive the request, I will do a, a resolution to your honorable body requesting local designation, and that process, as you well know, will take a few months. So at this point in time, can we bring this back in maybe a month?
Okay. Have you, have you had any conversation with Council President's office in this?
Yes, I have.
Okay. So motion to bring back in 30 days, colleagues?
So moved.
No objections. We shall bring back line item three in 30 days. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Line item four, status of Councilmember Castaneda Lopez submitting memorandum relative to the development commitments made in District, regarding District Detroit. Is there a motion? We did have an opportunity to speak to Councilmember Castaneda Lopez, and she's requesting to bring back in two weeks.
So moved.
Seeing that no objections, we shall bring line item four back in three, in two weeks, excuse me, ma'am clerk. Line item five, status of Councilmember Scott Benson submitting memorandum relative to NEZ homestead and rehabilitation jurisdictions. Is there a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Member vice chair, I know we've had this conversation kind of offline for sure, and we were going through and poring through the maps, and with it being budget, haven't had the opportunity to really revisit it. You have any-
So just real quick, Mr. Chair, and just like you said, so we, we recognize that we brought this forward in the budget time period. We didn't have any expectation that people were gonna prioritize that over budget. I believe that's the proper prioritization. Hoping that after budget, maybe within two weeks, maybe mid-April, we can look to bring these back, or maybe the third week of April, to bring the maps back. We've had a chance to talk to all of the council members. We made suggestions as per the maps, as to where we believe that certain districts should be reduced and where others could be placed. We're looking at, the administration is planning to do a mailing to all the residents in those NEZs, just to let people know to avail themselves, just in case some borders do get changed, and if borders are changed, then anybody who applies still gets that 15 years of tax relief. And so this is one of the only ways to get tax relief for our residents in the city of Detroit, and especially for residents who live in our neighborhoods. Typically, you're gonna see NEZs, which are neighborhood-imprisoned rehab and new, and those are on new construction, which is occurring within the 7.2 downtown, midtown, along the Gold Coast, but these can be availed by residents in our neighborhood. So someone on Brignard and Shaner, someone on Grand River and Losser could take advantage of something of this nature. So this is really imperative that we do this, so just looking forward to seeing what my colleagues come back with as far as suggested map changes or staying where they are. So, member chair, Mr. Chair, we can bring this back in-
Does you object? Three weeks?
Three weeks?
I have no problem with that.
And just requesting that all of my colleagues take a look at the maps. Any other questions, please? Get with, we're happy to work with anybody on this.
Gotcha. There's a motion to bring back line item five in three weeks. Is there any objections? Seeing that no objections, we shall bring line item five back in three weeks. Moving on to line item six and seven. If we can take those two together, colleagues. Line item six is status of Legislative Policy Division submitting proposed ordinance to amend chapter 14 of 1984 Detroit City Code. This is the community development, adding Article 17, publicly funded construction projects, Division 1, and a whole host of other changes in there. Line item seven is the status of Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to the request for LPD to draft an amendment to the proposed 51% local hiring ordinance to require Section 3 certification on city-funded construction projects. Colleagues, we did have an opportunity, office with, had a conversation with Pro Tem's office, and she's requesting a three-week bring back. Any objections?
On, on-
Both.
Both.
Six and seven.
No objection.
Seeing that there are no objections, we shall bring back line item six and seven in three weeks. Thank you so much. Line item seven, status of Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheff, oh, I'm sorry, eight. Line item eight, status of Councilmember Castaneda Lopez submitting memorandum relative to the sale of 2919 Wabash in Detroit, Michigan. Did have an opportunity to speak to member Castaneda Lopez's team, and she's requesting to receive and file this item. Any objections?
So moved.
Seeing that no objections, we shall receive and file line item eight. Status of Council, line item nine, status of Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to Preservation Fund Advisory Board Ordinance. We did have an opportunity to speak to member Sheffield, and she's requesting to remove this item from the agenda. Is there a motion to remove?
Motion to remove.
Seeing that no objections, we shall remove line item nine from the agenda. Line item 10, status of Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to the request for affordable housing information related to residential housing developments, which receive tax incentives. Is there a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Thank you. I know this was referred to the administration on March 14 for response, and we have not received one. Ms. Washington, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Stephanie Washington.
There you go.
Mayor's office.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we're requesting a two-week bring back on this item. We need more time.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to update Pro Tem on this item?
Uh, yes. Mr. Renshaw met with her yesterday-
Okay.
-and updated her on a number of items.
All right. Thank you so much, colleagues. Request to bring this, bless you, item back in two weeks. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seeing that no objections, we shall bring line item two, line item 10 back in two weeks. Thank you. Line item 11, status of Councilmember Castaneda Lopez submitting memorandum relative to the Gordy Howard International Bridge project, community benefits. We did have an opportunity to speak to LPD, as well as member Castaneda Lopez's office, and LPD is requesting a bring back in two weeks. Two weeks, right?
If I can address this through the chair, it's my understanding that we did submit the-
Please introduce yourself for the record.
I'm sorry. I'm also heard from Legislative Policy Division.
Yes, sir.
This was brought to our, has brought to our attention that we did provide the requested resolution regarding the request from member Castaneda Lopez to her office, I believe it was a few weeks ago. So if we can check with her, I don't think it's necessary to bring it back if we've submitted the resolution to her, but-
We still want to make sure that she's okay with it, because we, we did not receive that confirmation. So is there a motion, colleagues, to bring back in one week to allow the member to review it? Let's discuss. Seeing that no objections, we'll bring line item 11 back in one week. Thank you much. Line item 12, status of Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to request for LPD to draft an amendment to the inclusionary housing ordinance to include tax abatements that trigger affordable housing requirements. Colleagues, we did have an opportunity to speak with the office, and we do know that the Law Department is still working on this request, and they're asking for an additional two weeks. Is there any objections to bringing back line item 12 in two weeks?
So moved.
Seeing that no objections, we shall bring line item 12 back in two weeks. Line item 13, status of Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to affordable housing online database. Is there a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Thank you. I know we have Director Renshaw here. If you can please come forward.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
State your name for the record, please.
Donald Renshaw, Director of Housing and Revitalization.
Thank you so much. Just checking on the status of this request.
Yes, through the chair, we had a conversation with Pro Tem Sheffield. I had a conversation with Pro Tem Sheffield yesterday. It is the direction of both the mayor's office and Pro Tem Sheffield, that she is very interested in, and so is the mayor's office, in an actual site that can identify vacancies or availability of affordable housing as well. This takes a substantial amount of capacity and/or contract with an outside entity to help us. We do have an actual map that recognizes or identifies where affordable housing is located within the city of Detroit, but the request is actually to be able to find availability, which is another task at hand. And so we're meeting today to see what it would take to actually get it to a place where we can actually find availability in housing. Pro Tem Sheffield also agrees with that as well, and so we're gonna continue to work on that and to see what level of, of website that we should provide to the public for the city of Detroit.
Okay. So we requested to bring this back in one week. Does it sound like enough time?
I'm unsure, but I will know by today's date, or at today's date, that if this is gonna be a longer, long lead item, or if it's gonna be something that we can provide for the public as soon as tomorrow. I mean, we have a website. It just doesn't do exactly what Pro Tem Sheffield and the mayor's office wants it to do.
Okay. So, member Lila, we initially wanted to bring this back in one week. Can we give you two weeks to allow-
Yeah.
-that conversation to take place, and if there's any hiccups, the potential solutions-
Absolutely, absolutely.
-can be resolved in two weeks. Is there a motion?
That sounds appropriate, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Seeing that no, if there's been a motion to bring back line item 13 in two weeks.
All right.
Seeing that there are no objections, we shall bring line item 13 back in two weeks. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Director Renshaw. Moving on to new business. Before we do that, if there's anyone who would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand, and this gentleman, DeAndre Watson, will provide you the public comment card. We're still going to be providing public comment, general public comment at the end of the meeting. Line item fourteen, Office of Contracting and Procurement Contracts, submitting resolution contract number six zero 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 seven six one, one hundred percent city, excuse me, federal funding. This is to amend the public, provide public facility rehabilitation Eastern Market Corporation. It's for a hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to send to formal for approval or discuss? Is there a motion to send to formal?
Motion to approve.
Seeing that no objections, we shall send line item fourteen to formal with the recommendation to approve. Line item fifteen, submitting resolution authorizing contract number six zero zero one eight one eight. This is one hundred percent federal funding to provide housing, relocations, stabilization services, case management for persons experiencing homelessness. This is for two hundred thousand dollars contracted Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency. Is there a motion to discuss and/or approve?
Discussion.
Member Vice Chair?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion to approve line item fifteen. Is there any objections? Seeing none, we shall send line item fifteen to formal with the recommendation to approve. Line item sixteen, submitting res, report on and proposed ordinance to amend Chapter sixty-one of the nineteen eighty-four Detroit City Code. This is to amend Article seventeen, District Map Number forty-two, to show an M-two and a S-D-two zoning classifications where B-four, M-three, M-four zoning classifications currently exist on certain properties in a triangular shape generally bound by the rail line to the north, Bagley Avenue to the south, and I seventy-five Fisher Freeway to the west. I know, Mr. Gulak, is he here? I know this is one. There he is. Colleagues, have any questions, concerns on this particular item? Cool.
Mr. Chair.
Motion to discuss?
Some move.
All right. Mr. Gulak, I know this is one you've been working on. Give you a chance to get to the seat there. Introduce yourself for the record, please.
Hey, good morning. Chris Gulak, City Planning Commission staff.
Good morning. Member Vice Chair, floor is yours.
And, Mr. Chris, if you could just please explain, I just want this on the record. So, we're looking to do a downzoning from an M-four to S-D-two and to a B-four, excuse me, to an S-D-two and an M-two. Just kind of talk about why we're doing a downzoning here.
Sure. Yeah, through the chair, this is, this request was initiated by the Planning Department. They've done a big study in this section of southwest Detroit, and they petitioned the Planning Commission to downzone this area. The location is basically south of the train station, north of Honeybee Market there. A lot of the land along the rail line is vacant in M-four land, and it's been sitting vacant for a long time. So, the Planning Department would like to redevelop this neighborhood, I think, as a mixed-use residential, commercial, light industrial area. So, they're asking that a lot of the M-four land be rezoned, downzoned to S-D-two instead. They just put an R and B for a piece of land there. Sixteenth and Bagley was in the paper. They selected developer, so that would help and allow that project to move forward as well.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
So, we're asking that the public hearing be set in the future.
To be determined. Is there any other questions, concerns?
Oh, Mr. Chair, and so, how far away is this from the Ford campus?
Through the chair, this is just south of the train station, so it's just adjacent to Ford's Motors investment there.
So, was this rezoning discussed during the CBO process or during the community outreach process?
Through the chair, Mr. Etheridge indicates it wasn't directly discussed during the CBO process.
Wasn't directly discussed or was not discussed?
Was not discussed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to send to formal for introduction instead of public hearing? TBD?
Some move.
Seeing that no objections, then action shall be taken. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Gulak.
Thank you.
Line item seventeen, submitting resolution authorizing reprogramming amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year two thousand eighteen nineteen. Colleagues, can I get a motion to discuss, please?
Some move.
Thank you. Is there someone who can discuss this item? Line item seventeen, please come forward. You can take that one in the middle. That way, straight ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Tamara Fontaine Hardy. I am the Director of the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund and Economic Development Divisions in the Housing and Revitalization Department.
Thank you. So, I have, just my, my simple question is, is the reprogramming of these dollars, how do you determine, how does a department determine who receives the reprogramming dollars, the reprogrammed dollars, rather? I see it's now going to World Medical Relief, Sienna Literacy Center, and Boys and Girls Club. All of them are worthy organizations, but there's a whole host of worthy organizations. How do these three get chosen?
Through the chair, reprogramming is done a variety of ways, but for the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund, for which I'm here, these funds were being programmed because the organizations did not expend their monies in a, in a timely manner. And so, because of that, those dollars are being reprogrammed. For these particular organizations, it was last year we came before council to deliberate on the eighteen nineteen subrecipients. Those, excuse me, seventeen, seventeen, no, eighteen nineteen subrecipients. At the time, these three organizations actually costed out. That means that we didn't have enough money remaining in our budget to bring those groups on. Even though they met all the expectations, they were above the eighty points that they needed to be awarded, we ran out of dollars. We said to council, if we had additional dollars, we would bring them back in. So, this was our attempt to bring those groups in, because the reprogrammed subrecipients from the year fifteen sixteen did not expend their dollars down. Some of these groups, for various reasons, for example, Project C, St. Vincent de Paul, they, Project C actually went defunct, so their dollars were not expended. St. Vincent de Paul, their organization transferred their grant to another organization, so those dollars weren't expended. And then, the others just could not spend their dollars down in time. Even with an extension, they could not expend their dollars.
So, ultimately, these three were costed out?
Those three were costed out. Council actually asked us to go back and figure out a way to bring those groups in.
And they were the very next groups. It's essentially just trying to get right to the...
Exactly. So, we said that if there are any dollars remaining from our previous years of funding, we would definitely bring these groups in. This is our way of meeting that commitment to council to bring these groups in, that council asked that we bring in.
Thank you so much. Member Leland.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to you. What does HUD say about the, the timeframes that, as it relates to giving organizations time to spend? Because, you know, there could be a thousand reasons, you know, why some of these organizations have, have run into these problems. I mean, as I look at them and as I analyze them, these are groups that have come up for us year after year. They're very grassroots, and certainly, they deserve funding, and we should have expectations of them that they spend their money. But there could be a thousand reasons which is what led to, to them not, not, not doing so. Not that they don't have the ability to do so, but just that, or maybe, but that they just haven't done it in a timely fashion. But in terms of, you know, them staying in the rules, within the rules, I believe they're still within the rules, unless you can correct me.
So, HUD's expectation is that once the organization receives an award from us, they have a year to expend those funds. The city of Detroit actually offers the subrecipients additional time through a one-time extension to expend those funds. So, we do provide that to all the subrecipients. This is from the year fifteen sixteen, so this, these grant dollars are actually well over, close to two years old. So, we do allow those subrecipients. We reach out to them through conversation, through letter, through email. We alert them that the grant period is coming to an end, that we do have to expend down the dollars. So, this is our way of alerting them as well. As far as the city of Detroit is concerned, we give the organization a one-year grant. In this case, for fifteen sixteen, it was actually a little longer. I believe they received a year and a half, year-long grant, because we were not timely in getting that contract out to them. So, in that case, we actually extended the grant period to give them additional time to spend down those dollars. I can't say for each of these organizations what their level of capacity is for spending the money. I have an idea, but I, I don't want to say that here. But we do allow them an opportunity. We're against timeliness, so every year, we are expected with HUD funds to meet our timeliness goal. We have to expend those dollars down in a timely manner. We express this to our subrecipients, and our expectation is that we work with them to help them meet that goal. It is not always, we're not always able to do that. But we did reach out, and we did alert them that this was coming down the pipeline.
Thank you. And so, when you say you try to work with them to help them meet that goal, beyond just a simple time extension, how else are you, how else are you actually working with them?
We are connected to, through the chair, we are connected to them almost on a monthly basis, because they have to submit their timely drawdown requests. So, on the fifteenth of each month, we ask that they submit a drawdown request to draw those dollars down. If they're not drawing down in a timely manner, we're reaching out to them. We do a monitoring of the organization, where it's either desk monitoring, onsite monitoring, or a full-program monitoring, to look at their finances, to look at their capability and their capacity to draw these dollars down. So, we're in constant contact with the organization as much as possible. So, we are reaching out to them beyond just giving them a contract and beyond just sending them a letter. We do attempt to reach out to them via phone call and email.
Well, and through the chair, I, I agree that the, the organizations, you know, that are getting the reprogramming, you know, are certainly worthy causes. You know, I've, you know, I've been, I've been following some of, some of the work that some of these organizations have been doing, and certainly support them. But I want to make sure that, I mean, again, how, how did you come up with the, with the recommendation for these, for these three organizations?
She already talked about it. They were the groups that were costed out. That was the question that I asked.
Right. So, but beyond that, I, see, I thought Boys and Girls Club came and received CDG every, every year.
Through the chair, each year, all these organizations come to us with an application. We review the application, we score the application, we deliberate before council. These three organizations, unfortunately, did not receive funding or were not recommended because they costed out. We came before council. Council deliberated, said to us, we want these organizations brought back in. Do what you need to do to bring them in. We came back to council. This is our plan for bringing those groups in. If there are any available dollars made available through organizations that don't expend their dollars in a timely manner, they missed, due to their contract expiring, we will bring these organizations back in. This is our attempt to respond to that request and commitment.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I have additional questions for you that might, might conflict a little bit with, with some of those statements, but I'll, I'll be willing to talk with you at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other questions, Member Vice Chair?
Just more of a statement, and just looking at the timeline, and so, just, it seems like we're tightening up the shop. And so, in the past, there used to be money that was hanging out for ten years, and now we're actually moving towards a far more efficient space. I just want to say that I, I've noticed that how things are moving now, and people need to be on top of their game. And so, I do appreciate the fact that as a government, we should give people the call and, hey, we're, we're looking at taking this, please spend your money, and it sounds like you're doing that. So, just want to make sure that I acknowledge that fact, that we're tightening up the shop, and people are going to have to expend their money, because we want to comply with the federal regs as well. And so, I just want to recognize the fact that it looks like that's what we're doing.
Through the chair, thank you. I appreciate that. We do try our best to offer every opportunity to the subrecipients to spend their money. We want them to spend the money. We don't want them to give it back to us, but at the same time...
I'm sorry, we're, we're running low on time.
I'm, I'm good with that, believe me.
So, we, that was a comment giving you kudos.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, is there any objection to sending line item seventeen to formal with the recommendation to approve?
Some move.
No objections, that action shall be taken. Thank you so much for your...
Thank you.
Line item eighteen, submitting resolution authorizing property sale by Development Agreement nine, excuse me, two nine one five West Hancock. Is there a motion to, CPC has given the green light on this one. Is there any objections to sending to formal with the recommendation to approve? Seeing that there are no objections, we shall send line item eighteen to formal with the recommendation to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick on that one, I just got to acknowledge that we have a local resident who's been trying to do composting and create good, clean dirt in the city of Detroit for quite some time, and this is a fantastic story. She's a member of the Green Task Force. This is a new opportunity, and something we have not done in the city of Detroit in quite some time. We're taking fallow land, we're turning it into productive use, and making this part of our green chain. This is something that's going to help bring Detroit and make it a greener, leaner city. I just want to acknowledge passion for what she's doing and having the vision and the tenacity and the constitution to stick through it, because this is not something that's oftentimes embraced, but she's been willing to do this and making a name for herself, and I really want to acknowledge her for doing that, and thank you for making this happen.
Wait, we hand it everybody, so we can see who you saw going? All right. There we go. Great job. Thank you for that, Member Vice Chair. Thank you for your work as well and your dedication. So, moving on to line item nineteen, Council President Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to Planning and Development Department Accessibility Questions. Colleagues, is there a motion to refer to P. and D. D.?
Some move.
And bring back in two weeks?
Some move.
Seeing that no objections, that action shall be taken. Line item twenty, Council President Pro Tem Mary Sheffield submitting memorandum relative to the Affordable Housing Task Force. Colleagues, is there a motion to refer to LPD and bring back in two weeks?
Some move.
Seeing that there are no objections, that action shall be taken. Thank you so much, and that brings us to the end of the agenda. Now, public comment. We do have one card here. Anyone else who want to provide public comment? Once, twice, three times? Collection of public comments are closed. The one person we have is Carlton Goltz. Is Mr. Goltz here?
Francis has been on the...
Mr. Goltz is gone. Going once, twice, three times. Public comment is now closed. Members' reports, Member Vice Chair?
No report.
Member Leland?
No report.
No report from me either, and we are out at ten AM.
Be present for today. Councilmember Benson.
Scott Benson, aye.
Councilmember Castaneda Lopez. Councilmember Leland.
Present.
Councilmember McAllister, Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Spivey. Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Council President Brooktown Sheffield.
Present.
Council President Jones.
Present.
Don't forget you do everything.
Honorable co-chair, we will be in session. Those that are here for the budget hearing for zoning, if you will come, please, for the zoning appeal. Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Representatives.
If you would introduce yourselves for the record.
James Ribron, Director of Order Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. Hamina Davidson, Assistant Board of Zoning Appeals.
James George, ODFS.
Thank you.
Tina Tolliver, Officer Budget, Director of Budget Development, Execution and Monitoring.
Thank you.
Justin Buss, Office of Budget Analyst.
Thank you. You have the floor.
Well, Councilmembers, we actually received a set of questions from the Legislative Policy Division, which we responded to and provided to the appropriate departments in your honorable body. We sent a revised report on yesterday. If you do not have copies of the revised report, we do have that. And with that, we're actually prepared to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I'm going to begin with Councilmember McAllister.
Thank you, Madam President, and Director Ribron, Assistant. Thank you so much. We've talked on many occasions on several different issues, and I appreciate your, your support in different things that I've discussed with you. But Director, what, first thing I'd like to do is go to page 51-4, and I'm looking at the professional and contractual services, and I noticed that the 2020 budget, it has increased by, look like $54,000, $290,000. For 2022 to 2023, it drops back down. Could you explain that, please, sir?
I believe that decrease in salaries and wages is due primarily to a transfer of funding for...
No, sir, that, I'm, I'm talking about professional and contractual services.
I'm sorry. Professional and contractual services are increasing due to the transfer of funding for one administrative special services staff position to the miscellaneous professional services.
Okay. But then it drops back down, back to its original course of 2019, back in 2021 and through 2023?
Our, our new employee right now is, is not receiving benefits. They will be receiving benefits in, in the new fiscal year, which will be the cause for the increase.
Okay. So, I guess that goes into my next question then, and going to 5110. And I noticed that in the administrative special services staff, your, is being eliminated in this year's budget all through, and you only have one office assistant, three increase by one. So when you say that, and I'm looking at what I just asked about that, can you explain that, sir?
Yeah. BZA is not losing a position. Funding for one administrative special staff services position was transferred from salaries and benefits to miscellaneous professional services.
Through the chair. So the department had two task positions. One was reallocated to an office assistant, and the other one was transferred to miscellaneous professional services. So they still have the same number of positions, it's just the task salary is in professional services, and the other position was reallocated to office assistant.
Okay. Well, see, I'm not seeing that because in the 2018, 2019, you have five positions, but the 2019 through 2023, you have four positions. So...
Correct. So they had five positions. One position was transferred to miscellaneous professional services.
Uh huh.
And then one task position was transferred or reallocated to office assistant.
Okay. So my, I guess where my concern is, you still have, okay, although it's transferred however, but it's still one lacking. And with the number of requests for additional board of zoning issues, especially with the dispensaries and things of that nature, I'm just wondering, do you have enough personnel to cover these? Because as, as you and I have talked, they're coming at us left and right.
We are, we are in the position of getting that position filled. We recently filled the open position in October. We're working with the HR department now to post and get the next position, which will be someone with skills to post that job.
So therefore, there will, somewhere along down the line, look like beyond the 2023 budget, that will, that another position will be placed to fill that?
We, we hope to get this open position filled this year, early 2020.
Okay. I'm going to, Madam President, I'm going to submit my questions, and if we have a round two, I'll follow up just to save time. Thank you, Director Ribron. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to go back to explaining to me, what did you just say? How are those positions in the budget listed? You said one of them is listed under professional contractor services?
Correct, Madam Chair. So the department has five positions currently. Two of those positions are the temporary positions, okay? One of those task positions has been reallocated to an office assistant, okay, for this year and for next year. One of those positions, which is vacant, that funding has been transferred to miscellaneous professional services. So they still have the same amount of people, but the temporary positions are below the line in professional and contractual services.
So, and I guess I need to just understand for all the budgets, where does the task fall under? Where does it fall up under professional and contracted services? Does it fall up under salaries and wages? Does it fall up under, for every department? Would task positions fall in different places, or do they fall up under one particular place?
So, Madam Chair, for general fund departments, the task positions are in miscellaneous professional services. For other funding sources like, for instance, GSD, and they have black, white funding, we do show the task positions as FTEs. So it really depends on the funding source. But for general fund, they are in miscellaneous professional services.
So, everybody knows that I didn't favor tasks because to me, it is not enough transparency. And here's a prime example, because where does the salaries fall? They're falling in different places, in different, depending on who it is, depending on what group it is. And so how do you know whether or not you have employees there or don't have employees there, depending on where it's falling? I mean, if I go and look at somebody's budget, and for instance, we have the mayor's office coming, and I look at their budget, and I can take this up when they come, but where, how do I know about the employees and the salaries? There's no way, there's nothing that shows us, we wouldn't know if you have professional contractor services, that that's possibly somebody with a contract, somebody that's a task. But now you're saying it could fall someplace else. So it's just no transparency there, depending on the department. And, and that creates a problem to me. Because to me, when you're spending taxpayers' dollars, there needs to be some type of transparency as to where those dollars are going, and there is no transparency.
If I may, Madam President, so the, the positions that have been placed in the professional and contractual services area, we know what positions are there, and we know what we brought down. So I, I believe we can make that available to you.
Okay. Well, I would like to know that for every department because there's no way, I mean, based on what you're saying, there's no way you can know it for every department. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll come back, I'll come back with my other, with my other question. I'm going to move now to Councilmember Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning. Thank you all for being here. Question I have is, many of the questions that we were going to ask, the LPD asked, but one of them in particular dealing with the charges, the sales and charges services by decreasing by $35,000 or 218%. The response was that the increase in appeals is what fueled that, fueled by the marijuana ordinance. It's peaked, and the revenues are expected to return to pre-ordinance levels. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah. In 2016, 27, 2018, we had about 100 cases. Most of those were medical marijuana cases. And we had the moratorium that was lifted in the fall that kind of had things shifting around a lot. The medical marijuana cases are now beginning to, to level off, and we're not getting as many as, we haven't had that many this year. So we're going back to 2017, 2016 time where we were having cases come in at about 90 to, 90 to 95.
So are you forecasting at all any uptick in potential recreational marijuana? Because this is just dealing with medical marijuana, and recreational marijuana would be on the books potentially this fiscal year.
No, I would defer to Buildings and Safety for that because the cases come from them, and I'm not sure where they are in terms of dealing. We have two cases that are on our docket currently, but that, that's all we've had so far this year.
Well, I just say that because the, the ordinance hasn't been crafted yet. So forecasting though, and in terms, do you believe in your past practice and experience that we will, that reverting back to 2017 levels will be sufficient, understanding the nature of the industry?
I believe if that number is capped at 75, that we are probably close to that number now, and that we would not see an increase or a peak in the numbers that we saw in 16 and 17, in 17 and 18.
So again, remember, we're talking medical marijuana right now.
That, that's correct. And, and again, I would defer to BZA to let us know where we are in terms of the, where we are in terms of that, that number that we're talking about.
Okay.
But we, we, again, we take our cases that come in through Buildings and Safety, and right now, we are at, all of our cases are scheduled for hearing.
Cool. Thank you. And my last question, I did submit a memo, was about training. Where, the training dollars for your team, tell us about the cost that you have for the training and how often your team goes to training?
First of all, we, we train three or four times a year. And we include that in our schedule to have training to be something that we do ongoing. We're checking now to see what that training line is, but we train as a part of routine during, and there are open sessions for the community to come in and participate and learn also. So, yeah, we're, we're looking at about $2,500 in the next couple of years, and then it goes down to about $1,250. But again, we, we work with Michigan State University, Michigan, the Michigan Municipal League, and other entities that provide training for us because we're a board of zoning appeals.
And where, where can, where can we find the training dollars in the report?
Under...
That'll be, through the chair, that'll be under other expenses.
Yeah.
On page...
B51-6.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much. Thank you again for the work that you do as well.
Thank you.
Member Leland.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning. Thank you for all that you do, and I know there's a lot of work that goes on in the BZA. Thanks for taking my calls when I call and, and whatnot. B51-5, expecting revenues on your sales and charges dropping from $125,000 to $90,000 and staying flat from then on. What's the cause of that?
Again, that would have been the uptick in the medical marijuana cases that put us up to 125 last year, coming out of 17 and going into last year. We expect that our numbers will be back at current. We're currently at 50, 54 cases now, and we have about three or four months left. We figure we'll be right at that 90, 95, based on 2016 and 2017 cases that came in between April and June.
And if that changes, obviously you'll put a budget amendment in?
Yes.
Well, we want to make sure that, that you're able to function at the level that's appropriate for the, for the amount of cases coming in. So, you know, making sure that you keep, keep in contact with us about those. All right. I'm going to, you know, send my comments in writing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you all for the work that you all do. Both of my questions were already addressed by Member McAllister, Member Tate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benson.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ribron, thank you for the job that you do and your staff, and you guys do a really good job of hearing the community and making sure that we're making good decisions down there at the BZA. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that there is a total of $2,500 being recommended for professional development for the BZA staff or for, and the BZA members?
That's correct.
Okay. So at this, I'd like to make a motion to bring the BZA budget into executive session.
Motion has been made to put into executive session. Any further discussion? Are there any objections? Hearing the motion is approved.
I just don't think that's enough for the training that we need to do for our staff and for the BZA members. I think some people should be going to an APA conference. Maybe you rotate that, but you do need to be traveling and seeing how other BZAs handle business around the country and try to import what we think would work well here and try to export what they think could work here as well. And then looking at your responses to LPD, looking to lose one staff member, and your response, you do not support that recommendation.
We, we have a revised report. We are not losing that staff member.
Okay.
That, that, we're not losing that position.
Okay.
That, funding for that, that one administrative special services staff position was transferred to salaries and benefits.
Okay. So looking at B51-TAC 10, it looks five, four staff members?
We, we have four, and we have one more that we're going to fill.
Okay. And so that's not reflected in the budget documents?
Through the chair, so the fourth position, the funding has been moved to the professional and contractual services category.
Okay. And we're just not, we're just not going to show that they have that person?
Not as an FTE.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Castellano. No pair.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you guys for being here. My question is actually about, we asked this last year, it was an urging in the closing resolution to urge BZA and all boards and commissions honestly to switch to Gov. Delivery. Can you talk about the timeline for implementing that? Because I think in general, the communication is good, but I know in just the last two weeks, there's several cases that we didn't get information about until literally the day before. And then we sent a letter, but ideally, we would have had the correspondent sooner so we could have given you guys that information sooner. So is there a way, and I don't know if it's in your budget or not, but to switch to Gov. Delivery, which is the system that we have for the city? So it's then, anyone can subscribe to that and the emails go out automatically versus emailing an individual person and, and getting a response?
Okay. We're not familiar with Gov. Delivery. We will look into that and work to be consistent with the system that, that you're using. We don't have a problem with that. And I guess you say that you have, the last couple of weeks, you did not get notices?
It was the la, I have several staff that get the agendas, and for whatever reason, the last couple of weeks, there was a couple that just, we didn't get until literally the day before. So we submitted letters in opposition actually to two of those cases, but we just found out honestly the, the day prior to the hearings. And so usually it's consistent, and you guys do a great job, but it's emailing an individual staff person or staff people, and it, I think really should, Gov. Delivery is the city that, I think, the city, the system that we have a contract with as a city. It's not just me and my office. IT, I think, can get you guys set up. I think it's just, I don't know if you need to have money in your budget for the subscription of that. My understanding is that there's not a cost because we just have a contract for citywide. But if that could happen, like, within the next month or so, that would be incredibly helpful. So then even as residents want to get the content, they can just subscribe via Gov. Delivery. And obviously, you have to generate the content, but it's going to go out to everybody, and staff don't have to remember which list to send stuff to.
Okay. Yeah, we would gladly work on that and get that implemented ASAP.
Okay. Cool. Thank you, guys. Other quick question is just around outreach and engagement. I know there's been a couple of new BZA people that we've appointed or reappointed, and questions that we've asked them during committee, because people don't necessarily understand the BZA process, and like, what cases go there, and how it works, and if they can come down and give public comment. So there's an effort to look at maybe having some meetings in the community. I know you talked about training and that community members could actually attend the training. You talked about what efforts there are to do outreach and engagement in the community so people understand BZA's role better and what they can do, and how do you guys advertise and share that information about training?
Meetings, BZA meetings in the community could be burdensome. And I'll try to go into detail, but this is a central place. People know where to come, and we want to make sure that people aren't running around looking for where a meeting might be. looking for where a meeting might be. We have our trainings in the community and those are open to the community and anybody can come to those trainings. And I also make myself available to community groups, council evening meetings, community groups ask me to come out all the time. And we also let people know that they're obviously welcome to come and speak at public comment. Again, we're willing to take more suggestions as to what more we, we could do, but we get calls all the time, requests for me to come out and speak and we, we do that all the time.
Cool, thank you. I think the, the, it's not just you, it's the commissioners themselves and we have gotten requests for folks, like if the project is specifically in their neighborhood, then it makes sense to have the meeting closer. I know you guys have obviously the reporters and the staff there and such and that it's difficult, but I think just how the mayor as well as council has, you know, we have to have by charter meetings in the community. I know you guys don't necessarily have to by charter, but to, to have one in of itself, even if it's just more for educational or to hear from peoples, from the community, I think can be helpful. And maybe it's the commissioners take the lead per district. I don't know, I think there's different ways to be creative about structuring, but to think, to think what we can be doing more moving into the next fiscal year.
I, I would definitely be willing to, to look at that. I'm thinking if we had one case that we took into the community as opposed to doing three or four cases, take one case, a case that's dealing with development in that community that's more germane to what's happening, we would definitely be open to looking at that and making sure that, that the community is involved in getting that opportunity.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And can you send us, I asked about the advertising, the training, can you send us a list of upcoming trainings that you have scheduled for this year, if you know that, so that we can then help share the information out?
Okay, we don't have them scheduled yet, we just, because of our docket, but we have, we did one in January, we haven't done another one yet. So another one's gonna be coming up in April or May.
Okay.
And we will make sure that that information gets to you and all members.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, for the Red Rod.
Good morning.
Good to see you, sir. Thank you for all you do. Again, you answer our calls and I see you everywhere in the community. I have financial questions that we'll submit, but one, in addition to what you and I spoke on the other day, just a clarification on the, on the board's role as far as granting waivers for the medicinal marijuana facilities. Is that, is that allowable without the ordinance? Is that something different? And what is our practice there?
If, if a, but a appellant is denied or needs a variance, they can come to the board and appeal that decision. If that, if it's denied and the decision is overturned, then that essentially puts that appellant in the system to, to go after that, that building permit.
Okay.
We do have occasion where a decision is made and board members reconsider their vote?
No, not necessarily that. And I know, I know you're frightened, but just, just a normal process if, if B.C. denies it, they can come to you for, come to the board for a waiver?
The ordinance states that any decision that is made that is not favorable, that they don't like, they can appeal that decision. Now, if there is a case where something can't be appealed, the law department, the, the report will indicate that it can't be appealed and the law department will tie in and say that that can't happen also. So what we do is to make sure that we can move forward with a case that's been denied or that needs variances with the support of B.C. and the law department.
Okay, okay. I may have a follow-up to that, but again, financial question on the way. Appreciate you doing a great job and, and I agree with Member Benson, you need a little more money for that, for the training, for the staff, for the board and staff persons. And keep it up, good work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I want to just go back to the question on training and as you get new commissioners in, do they, what type of training do they?
We have orientation training for new members and all members are invited to attend that orientation training. And then again, they participate in the trainings that we have ongoing. That orientation training is usually a two-hour session where we familiarize them with the ordinance, the rules and procedures, scheduling and what, what to expect, talk to them a little bit about the, the ordinance and, and what to expect in terms of approval criteria. But we definitely have an orientation. That orientation is every year in December or January.
Okay, so as far as outside training, what type of outside training do they have? For instance, I know just recently there was some training on marijuana in, I think, or Lansing. Did any of the, your board attend that?
Board members did not. Staff did participate in two medical marijuana trainings that were sponsored probably in 2017, but board members have not as of yet participated in any outside training, just training that we provided in-house.
Okay, okay. Your, then, under salaries and wages is, you have, what's your title? Are you the deputy director? Do you have a deputy director now?
No, no deputy. Tamina is, I'm sorry, Ms. Davidson is, is my assistant and we got her reclassified when we did the changes last year to, to kind of have her be in my assistant. So she's actually serving in that position.
Okay, so you don't have a deputy?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a need for a deputy?
I would say probably not, that, that Ms. Davidson in her capacity is, is doing a lot of that administrative stuff that I need in terms of support and then myself and staff can focus on the zoning aspect of things. So I think at this point, we're, we're in a pretty, pretty good position to be able to handle things with the current makeup of the staff.
Okay, and then I'm gonna go lastly back to what Member Tate said about recreational marijuana. Once there is something more on the books regarding recreational marijuana, so you're gonna have on one hand, medical marijuana, on the other hand, recreational marijuana. You still feel that you have sufficient staff to be able to handle what comes your way with that?
It's my hope and desire to continue working with HR to get the open position filled and we believe that that will be sufficient. We, we handled the medical marijuana with three of us and I, I look back and wonder how we did it, but I believe once we have the five in place, that we will definitely be able to handle anything coming forward.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna go back to a second round. I know you said you had some questions that you wanted to ask Member McAllister.
Thank you, Madam President. So Director Riveron, so therefore with this new position, what is going out there? It could be anywhere. So if you're asking us to approve a budget, how do we know to give you the sufficient amount of dollars so that, that you can have the sufficient amount of personnel to assist you?
Well, this opens a position will definitely be an inspector, someone with zoning and zoning background. So this, this will not be a, a general type of position.
Yes, sir.
And, and we believe working with HR, that we will be able to come up with a package that will be good enough to, to get someone in that would be interested in coming in and working in the department.
I guess my, I guess really my question maybe not directed at you because that's something you're trying to do, but directed at, because you said that, that personnel could be anywhere as, as Madam President has stated, you know, we, we need to know where these, these people are. So how do we say, or how do we know what to approve if director needs some additional personnel? We know it's coming, but it's not coming here in this budget and this budget goes to 2023. I guess that's what my question is, that's what I'm a little lost at.
Through the chair, so the, the vacancy that the director is speaking of is the task position in the professional services category.
Yes, ma'am.
And so the plan is for the funding that is there, the departments will submit a position amendment.
Could I stop you there?
Yes, sir.
When you say there, where?
In the professional and contractual services portion of their budget.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
Okay, and so the departments know what task positions are located in that area and so they're aware that if they want to do some hiring, they, they know their funding.
Okay, but the, the, I guess the question I have with that is it, it drops down, it increases in 2020, but then it drops back down in 2021 to 2023 and that's, and you're saying if it's there, it's there for the 2020, but it's not there for 20, bless you, 2021 through 2023?
Correct. Through the chair, so temporary positions are just that, they're temporary.
Yes, ma'am.
And so if funding is available, then there will be funding for the temporary position. Those positions are not projected in the out years because they, they are temporary for that reason. So when, for instance, when we develop the 21 budget, if funding is available, then you'll see positions or funding for those temporary positions in that year in those out years as well. But for now, temporary positions are considered budgeted for one year.
Okay, and maybe it's me then, because I believe I heard the director say that he's trying to get that position for sometime this year, but I don't, again, I just don't see it because the funding is not there and he's, so I guess that's something that we'll, we'll talk offline to get me more up to date, okay? All right, thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Corley.
It would be great if Budget, Budget can provide counsel by executive session, a listing of all task positions and professional services contracts throughout the, the budget because this keeps coming up, you know, in other budget hearings and so for counsel to understand, you know, and have the transparency that you need, it'd be wonderful if they could provide that.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Some, some will, Madam President.
Thank you. I would like to even by the change that Mr. Corley amended, to ask, positions change and as positions continue to add, ask task positions that this body is informed of any positions that are, to me, that was always my concern, where not enough transparency when there is a task position. So even moving forward, I would like to know when there is a task position added to a budget. So Member Tate?
Yeah, so I was just wondering, is there anything legislatively that we can do to assure that it takes place? Because right now we're just requesting and asking, is there, outside of a resolution, some kind of ordinance or anything that we can put in place to ensure that we receive a report and receive information when it, when it takes place?
Yeah, I, I guess I can work on that as far as an ordinance with Mr., with Mr. Whitaker. Okay, okay, but we, we still probably need it for now, so.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Motion has been made. Any objections? Thank you, Member Tate. Hearing objections, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
All right, we will move now to public comments and I have one card. Is there anyone else here that wishes to make public comments? Is there anyone else here that wishes to make public comments? I have two cards. Public comment cards are cut off Joanne, Joanne Warwick and Commissioner, Charter Commissioner Joanne Underwood.
I want to say my, my public comments today is about...
Okay, thank you. Joanne Warwick, about two minutes.
Yes, hello. First of all, media services, can we do a mic check, please? Mic check, mic check.
I hear you very well.
Okay, well, I've noticed before that when it got to public comment, when I was watching on my computer later, all of a sudden you could barely hear public comment. So since City Charter Commissioner Joanne Underwood is here, I recommend moving media services out of the mayor's office and somewhere else. So Board of Zoning Appeals, well, two things. Number one, about the medical marijuana and what may become, you know, statewide legalized marijuana. I understand that is an issue for people. I am a native Michigander, but I did live in California, Oakland, California. And the U.S. Attorney there, excuse me, the city attorney of Oakland filed for an injunction against the U.S. Attorney to not raid their dispensaries. They are to the point where they protect the jobs, they understand they have revenue. Now, I didn't understand everybody's phobia about the dispensaries, but when I go up by seven and eight miles, I think, wow, there are a lot of them. In my neighborhood, we had a lovely dispenser, I never saw anybody act a fool except the person who ran a truck into the ATM at like three or four in the morning, but that had nothing to do with their activities, it was the ATM. So, you know, if Oakland County isn't allowing these, that's a great revenue opportunity for Detroit and, and Wayne County and I say, go for it. If they want to come spend their money here, tax it, regulate it and use it. So that's just a comment in there. In terms of Zone Detroit, I'm very concerned about this process, why we're paying outside people to work on our zoning ordinance and most people don't know about it. At one of the City Planning Commission hearings, I heard Mr. Kamani Jeffrey say that if they implement the Zone Detroit, it will decrease the steps a developer has to go through from 10 to 3. That seems to me to be the main point of it, but more citizens should know. And what is, does that have anything to do with the zoning appeals? Are they familiar with the Zone Detroit?
Thank you. Okay, that will complete our public comments for today, that will complete our Board of Zoning budget hearing. Thank you all, thank you for your job, well done, thank you. All right, we will recess until 11:00 a.m. Councilmember Benson.
Ms. Benson, aye.
Councilmember Casta Lopez. Councilmember Leland.
Present.
Councilmember McAllister Jr. Councilmember Spire.
Present.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Council President Pro Tim Sheffield. Council President Jones.
Present.
Madam Chair, you do have your call. Having a call, and present, we will be in order. Those who are here for the mayor's office budget, if you will come forward to the table, please. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you would, both introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam President. I'm Alexis Wiley and I am Mayor Doug's Chief of Staff.
Thank you.
Katie Hammer, Deputy Chief Operating Officer in the mayor's office.
Thank you.
Hakeem Berry, interim Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you.
Tanya Stoudamire, Deputy CFO and Budget Director.
Thank you.
Tanya Mason, Budget Analyst, Budget.
Thank you.
James Shore, Business and Security.
Lawrence Meyer, Director of Homeland Security Emergency Management.
Thank you. Okay, you have a phone? Hold on, before you begin, if media services can bring in the handheld mic in case the back row needs to say something, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, let me go.
Good morning again, Madam President. Thank you for this opportunity to present the mayor's office budget to the Honorable City Council. As I said, I'm Alexis Wiley and I'm Chief of Staff and I'm here with my colleagues. As you all know, the mayor serves as the Chief Executive Officer for the city and oversees all the city's departments. Under the direction of the mayor, the executive team is responsible for developing and... Under the direction of the mayor, the executive team is responsible for developing and implementing the vision and initiatives as established by the mayor. Our office appropriation includes the Office of the Mayor, lean team, our lean processing team, Department of Neighborhoods, the residents, and the jobs and economy team. As with every year, the mayor's office is being fiscally responsible with our budget. Our total appropriation is increasing by less than 1%. And like all departments, we work with our CFO to implement, to ensure that we implement cost savings across the board on a number of different areas. And additionally, as you know, as has been the case for a number of years, there's a separate appropriation in our budget for homeland security and emergency management. And Director Meyer, who is here, will speak to Homeland Security's budget.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The budget is made up of some general fund dollars and some urban area security initiative grants. We currently have 12 full-time employees, nine of which are from the general fund, and three of which are task employees funded by the Urban Area Security Initiative. Our main purpose in our department in managing the Urban Area Security Initiative is to provide tools to the police department, the fire department, for counterterrorism and appropriate response to critical incidents and emergencies.
Okay.
And through the chair, we welcome any questions that you'd have at this time. We did submit our questions in writing as well.
Thank you. If there's anyone here for public comments, if you have not received a card, if you raise your hand, she will get your card. Thank you. Member Tate?
First.
First? Did you go first or not?
Mm-hmm.
I found number McAllister went first.
Nobody beat me down.
I found number McAllister went first. Where's my, I guess that's what you do when you don't have your notes in front of you. No, member McAllister went first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for being, thank you, Madam President. My question is regarding the salaries, when we see that there's an increase moving forward, a big jump from the adopted 2019, sorry, 2019 to the recommended of $600,000. What's the reason for that huge increase?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. In this budget, we are recommending an increase in the Homeland Security budget for six additional intelligence specialists. They work with their police department counterparts to implement a coordinated violence prevention strategy using technology at targets across the city. The mayor's office budget is basically, all that it includes for salaries is a standard across the board, 2% increase for its current employees. We are not, so most of the increase you're seeing there is from the Homeland Security investment in those additional six intelligence specialists.
So they're not broken out in their own separate category? Because I see a section for Homeland Security. Where are they?
They have their own appropriation, but I believe when you look at everything, in the way that the budget is displayed, I believe you're looking at page?
Eight?
Eight?
No, six.
Six, that's right. So the way that the budget is displayed on page six, both of our appropriations, both the one for the mayor's office and the appropriation for Homeland Security, you're looking at all of the salaries and wages there.
And through the chair, and B-338 breaks it down across our different divisions. So that's Office of the Mayor, Neighborhoods, Lean Processing, Jobs and Economy Team. And you can see that is where the 2% that we're all getting is reflected.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, we've had a lot of conversation about this at the table. The mayor mentioned the expansion of the green light initiative. I know, Ms. Stoudamire, we were awaiting the extrapolation of the dollars in the various departments. I don't know if it's been provided, it seems like something that should be fairly simple to provide. I have not seen it.
Yeah, through the chair, we're still preparing that information.
What's the challenge with giving that information, seeing that the budget has already been prepared and the concept is out there?
Right. There's no challenge in getting the information, it's just a matter of time in just getting all the information that I need from the various departments. So we're still coordinating the effort.
So, again, I'm just trying to figure out, it's been presented to this body as a line, a budget item. We have to approve these, this initiative, essentially, if we approve the dollars. When are we going to get the information? We're now in budget.
Through the chair, the police department hearing, I understand, is on Monday.
Yes.
And that information will be prepared, and your question should be able to be?
But it's, but from my understanding, it's not just police department dollars, it's from three different departments. Two departments, I believe, we've already had before. So why do we have to wait until the police department? Because that's what I was thinking was happening. But why do we have to wait until the police department if we're in budget hearings right now? And we're, this was a mayor's initiative, he announced it at the state of the city, so.
And through the chair, what we're doing right now is we're going back and we're looking at DPW and costs that may be related to the traffic cameras. But how that might relate to this new initiative is maybe just a portion of that funding. So then we have to go back and determine what portion of that increase in funding is related to various activities in order to try to isolate that portion that you're referring to. So that's been the delay in getting that information to you.
Okay, yeah, I think the conversation has to start here, for me at least. This is not a police department initiative, this is an initiative out of the mayor's office that's being presented by the police department, it's going to be operated by the police department. But this is more of a mayor's office initiative, and I could be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, Alexis, please. Yes, no?
Through the chair, this is something that, absolutely, that the mayor has been championing as a core initiative to continue to reduce crime in the city, so.
And I appreciate him for doing that, but my other question is, we've, I've asked, and I wonder, where's the policy surrounding this initiative? We've got signatures going out, petitions, so to speak, that the administration have asked folks to sign off on in the communities. I would sign off on it as well, because I want security and be safe. I want as much security and safety as possible. But our job also is to identify what is the policy surrounding it. So we're being asked to approve the dollars, we're being asked to approve the concept, but we have not been provided any policy at all. We've been told some things, but nothing has been presented to us. What, at what point are we going to be receiving it? And then also, if I will, having a conversation with the community about this. Because even though, as I told the mayor when he was here, I love and support my block club captains and associations, but there's also a lot of folks who can't make those meetings, who are not a part of those meetings, who are taxpayers, who are also involved in the community. What about the holistic conversation about this initiative? And I do support cameras, but not without a policy.
Through the chair, per the charter, the policies regarding policing are deferred to the Police Commission. So we will work closely with the Board of Police Commissioners as well, and I know that they were here yesterday, but.
Bless you. And they said they have not seen anything either.
That issue.
They said they haven't seen anything, haven't had the discussion at all, but the budget is here now for this body. So yes, they will be the one that's approving it, but this body approves the dollars that goes into the actual initiative to actually make it work. So we can't be pushed aside afterwards if we're being asked to approve the dollars for the initiative now. Again, I support cameras, but I need to know what am I supporting, whole list, and whole.
And through the chair, that's absolutely fair. I think that what, with the police department coming before you as well on Monday, we'll be able to dive in a little bit more into those conversations regarding policy being established by the Police Commission. But I appreciate what your feedback.
What about the community conversation? And I'll be done with that, Madam President, but what about the conversation with the community as a whole?
Right.
Because that's one thing, and we have a time limit when it comes to our budget, being able to sign off on it, and the mayor vetoing, and then council overriding that process itself. Are we talking about having conversations within the community within that timeframe?
Through the chair, so conversations through the Department of Neighborhoods have been happening over, since the policy was, excuse me, since the initiative was announced. However, I absolutely, once they get to a policy, I do think that that makes sense for us to make sure that we're engaging and having really robust conversation throughout the city on those policies, so that is absolutely fair.
So I know I'm pretty engaged in my community.
You're extremely engaged, yes.
And I've not been invited, have not heard about any conversations that have happened in District One at least, may have been some of the other districts, but there may have been a community meeting where they made the comment and tried to get folks to sign off on it. But in terms of a community conversation in the district itself, can you give us a list of where that has taken place? Not just community meetings, but a conversation with the community at large.
Through the chair, the, what you're referencing is you want to see a policy regarding this, and also want to see that discussed within the community, which makes absolute sense. As you've also said, that the police, that is, in the purview of the Police Commission, we will be working with them, as well as I know Chief Craig, very closely on that policy, and then connecting back with council to ensure that we are actually having meetings throughout the community to, to make sure that there is a comfort level around that policy as well. So I appreciate what you're saying, and we will be following that.
Okay, it just sounds like you may have the numbers already, because the reality is, we have, this is a budget item that we're, we have to approve right now. And I would be supportive of using, putting those dollars elsewhere if we don't have that conversation, if we have not had that policy put in place right now. This is the only opportunity I have, because you even said it yourself, that the policy, all of that goes through the Board of Police Commissioners and the police department, which I'm not trying to subvert. But right now, this is the budget part, and this is our opportunity to have at least some kind of conversation about it. So I appreciate moving forward, having that conversation.
Absolutely.
And as always, Alexis and team, thank you for the work that you do, but we've got to do, I think, a lot more work on this one.
Through the chair, duly noted.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Benson.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for being here. So one of the responses regarding the homeland security was a violence prevention program that's being run out of homeland security. Can you just briefly discuss that? Is that violence prevention? Because to me, violence prevention is a policing issue, not homeland security. So where is the nexus of Biden's prevention for homeland security? Why is that not part of a policing responsibility?
So let me just start, and then I can have our director jump in through the chair, I apologize. This is a place where homeland security actually works very closely with the police department on, and so the violence prevention strategy is, you know, following social media, working through, monitoring the technology that we have, and then providing homeland security and other leaders with intelligence on, so that they can make decisions. Please, director, jump in.
Through the chair, two components in the Crime Intelligence Unit. There's the Counterterrorism Assessment Team, which we have met with to provide them the tools to vet major events occurring in the city, to determine if there's any threats against any person or against the event itself. That's one aspect. The CIU, the Criminal Intelligence Unit, does research on known criminals, trying to determine where they are, and presenting a person of interest report, and sending that out to all the precincts to provide information to those precinct commanders about these individuals. The second thing is, they act as a fusion center, sharing information with the federal government, the state government, and locals about criminals and activities of criminals that are crossing city and county and state lines. They also provide service to the real-time crime center and camera monitoring.
Okay, and so therein lies my concern. So once we start to blend law enforcement with homeland security, homeland security is really a department of state-level type function. Policing is a local function. And then once you start to cross lines, federal, county, then state, and city, then you start to share information, and now we're looking to have a camera system, of which I'm not a big fan. And so I'm always concerned about the slippery slope of, we're now charting and we're surveilling our own people, we're saying that it's for this, but in our reality, it's for law enforcement purposes. That, really, that line should not be crossed, and should be a hard line, and not a gray line, when it comes to State Department anti-terrorism versus law enforcement. And what I'm seeing is a blending of the two, which concerns me. And now with the conversation about a surveillance program that could be part of a camera system that we're deploying citywide, and then not having a good, strong message of how we're separating the two, concerns me. And so I just want to make that very clear. And so when we talk about the cameras, and I understand that the chief of police will be here on Monday, and looking forward to that conversation at this table, and we have DPW, who's part of that program, and we have the DWO that's also part of that program, really looking forward to how we move forward on that. But I have a big concern when it comes to how we watch, look, and collect data on the residents of the city of Detroit, especially when it comes from a law enforcement, and then you go to homeland security, which are two separate functions and entities. And when they blend, there's often mess. So just concerned about that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Miss Spivey?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two rounds. The first one, I'll start with, from my right brain, organizational chart. Who works for the mayor? I don't know who works in 11 anymore. And I don't think there are any eagles at the table, but I've been on the elevator plenty of times, and the 11th floor button is pressed, and somebody walks off, I have no idea who they are. And they shouldn't know the folk who help run the budget in the city of Detroit. So can you send an org chart, current org chart of the mayor's administration? And who is the chief of services and infrastructure? What do they do?
Through the chair, yes, or org chart, we will submit you on.
If you could, for me, they may not need, I need pictures, if you could, so I can know who these folks are. I need to know who people are working on 11, so we know who the. And then the chief of services and infrastructure?
Through the chair, the chief of services and infrastructure is Arthur Jamison.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Secondly, salaries. This is not the council budget, it's the mayor's budget, but it's related. I'm fighting for future councils. If we're going to attract good, quality people to this council, you've got to raise the salary. And I say that because the mayor's in charge of the elected officials compensation committee. If you got what we got, you wouldn't be the chief of staff right now. You wouldn't come, you would have left Fox Two to come work for the city of Detroit if you got what we got. So your, I won't say, this is in the paper, your salary's in the paper, twice ours, twice ours. You do work hard, so you last night in the meeting, late at night. But, and I think there are more folk who've come on board, who probably may comparable more to city council, and the clerk, throw the clerk in there as well. The president came in an amount in 2005, there was a cut. Tate and I came in '09, there was another cut. Two more cuts, the first term we were here, her second term. And we're not even back to where we were in 2009. And I'm concerned that we won't have people who will want the job and take the scrutiny that being on the council. And I heard the argument, if you raise the council's salary, people in the community immediately will be in uproar. That might be true, because they see us, and it's in a public setting. For the administration's salaries, they're not, they're done right here at this table. And we're not going line by line, asking who makes this, who makes that. So yours is kind of, kind of behind the scenes. Ours is not. So again, for future councils, I would hope the administration will look at what this council makes, what small percentage it is of the entire city budget, and comparable cities, and what is asked of this entire council here. This is an odd year, ironically, and so that commission meets on the odd year. So I would, and I think yours has increased every single year, the last couple of years or so. And Ms. Corley, I think you were doing something, Madam President, a report for Madam President. Do you know what we might get there through the chair?
Madam President, we have that out today.
All right, so you all just look at it, Alexis, just look at it, so that in the future, we will continue to have good, quality folk. I mean, the folk around this table now are very good people, and we do quite a bit. We asked for the job, and we got it. But this table will change five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, and we want to continue to bring more good people to the table as we have right now.
Through the chair, I absolutely understand what you're saying, and I think it is also important to note that the elected officials compensation commission, they're the ones who make those decisions.
But the mayor selects them.
And, right, and they are, they, right, we do appoint. And I do agree with what you're saying, because when you look at it, while I was at a late-night meeting, so were you. And so are every single one of you, so, and your staff. So I think that what you're saying makes a lot of sense.
And then a chart, do you have a chart?
The org chart, yes, sir.
Pictures for me.
And we will do a special org chart with pictures.
Thank you, ma'am.
Everybody on.
I'll wait for the second round. Thank you, Madam President.
You think it's going to be a second round? Okay. Remember McAllister?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And Chief of Staff, Wiley, Ms. Mason, Ms. Barry, thank you so much. When I call, you do talk to me, so I will say that. But I guess I have to kind of like continue on with, remember Spivey and remember Tate. On page 3311, could you explain to me what 932048, Executive Assistant to the Mayor, and what 932610, Intelligence Specialist? What are they?
So the Executive Assistant to the Mayor is essentially just the, so all of us, despite your individual title, you are an Executive Assistant to the Mayor. Your salary, whether you are 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5, really refers to your salary range. The analyst position, you said, that is in the Homeland Security positions. So that's not within our direct office, but it's simply how we denote what range you are in a class in the mayor's office.
Yes, ma'am. And the reason why I picked those two numbers, because out of all these areas that I'm looking at, those were the largest two numbers. And what I'm just trying to find out is, where does the district managers come in? Because I do not see, those are the only two that...
It's right here.
No, 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 you're so right. They are executive. They all fall into the Executive Assistant positions, right here under, okay, right. So where are they? Right here, I'm trying to make sure I'm on top of what...
Through the chair, on page B3311, you'll see, there's the Office of Mayor, below that is the Neighborhoods. And then, there are two titles. There's the Director of Neighborhood City Halls, and the Deputy Director of Neighborhood City Halls, and those are the Dons that you know.
Say that again, now?
There's the Deputy, on that page, you see where it says seven? There's like two, there's the Director of Neighborhood City Halls, which has seven, and the Deputy Director of Neighborhood City Halls, which has seven. Those are the Dons.
The district managers.
The district managers.
Those are the district managers?
Yes.
Just the district managers?
Yes.
What about the Assistant District Manager?
Those are the Deputy Director of Neighborhood City Halls.
Okay. So they fall into the categories of the budget as to...
They're in the Neighborhood Cost Center in the budget. So within the executive, within the mayor's office, on page B33-8, you'll see there are five cost centers under the mayor's executive office. One of those cost centers is called the Neighborhoods, and that's where the district managers and deputy district managers are budgeted.
Ah, so that kind of coincides with what Member Spivey was saying, then, how they make so much more than, or a little bit more than we do.
Through the chair, the deputies, district managers, and the district managers do not make more than council.
That's not true. That is not true. Unless their salaries went down, that is not true. When they came in, excuse me, through the chair.
Through the chair, apologize.
When they came in, they came in making more money than council. Now, unless their salaries went down, the directors came in, Neighborhood, making more money, or even the same as council. And I know council haven't received that type of raise, so...
Through the chair, we will follow up on that question.
Mr. Corley, can you add something to that?
I believe you're correct, Madam President.
I think I'm right, too. Then if I'm wrong, Lord forgive me.
Thank you. And I'll wait to receive that documentation, as well as the rest of my colleagues. The second thing is, is I guess, I have to go back to my colleague, Member Tate. You know, there are so many meetings that are happening in my district, and I'm out there. And there are so many meetings, we have, and I've talked to the mayor about this, we have the PGA that's coming, we have the State Fairgrounds that I know nothing about. There's something that's coming, and I'll kind of leave that alone, because I think you're going to be touched with that at public comment. But it's just the fact that, as the elected officials, a lot of times, I come in contact with interference, because of, I'm supposed to be out there representing the people who they elected, but then I get interference from that. So with that, and maybe that's why they get paid more than me. So, you know, I don't, I don't know, but that's one of the issues that I have regarding this budget here, and that's what I wanted to bring out. Okay? And I'll wait till the next round. Thank you.
Everybody think there's going to be another next round? We're not going to be sitting here wanting to... Okay. Member Leland.
Thank you, Madam President, and good late morning to the mayor's office, to Ms. Wiley. So, you know, certainly, there's been a lot of, shall we say, some controversy over the expanded security surveillance program. And how I had first gotten wind of it, actually before the State of the City, was the district managers were out passing around, you know, signature sheets to community leaders at various community meetings throughout the city. And I had gotten calls, you know, with concerns that, you know, before any major community engagement with the overall community, it seemed as though they were looking to build that support through the petition gathering of community leaders. And when you sit down or you request support from someone, sometimes, it's all about how you ask the question, you know? Should we, you know, put money into security, you know, or surveillance, you know, versus recreation? I mean, I think a lot of the times, how you ask that question is how you get your answer. And so, you know, hearing from a concerned, you know, resident about the fact that they have been contacted by the district managers to sign essentially a petition, you know, was a bit concerning to me. And so, as I worked through this process, you know, I obviously have that in the back of my mind. But I think also, the issue comes down to prevention, right? When it comes to crime. And when I look at the budget here, I think that this issue about crime should be holistic. And obviously, you know, a citywide surveillance program is obviously not the only, you know, aspect to this. And so, when I look at prevention, I look at things like Halloween Initiative Division, you know, 35,000 adopted in 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023. I recognize that Angels Night has gone away. The question becomes, what is the dollar set aside to replace that program? And how do we use those dollars for prevention activities, right? In addition to, you know, a potential surveillance program? Mayor's Spring Cleaning Initiative, 50,000 adopted in 2019, zero for 2020, zero for 2021, zero for 2022, et cetera. Motor City Makeover, and this is on page B33-8, appropriation 330035, Motor City Makeover, $50,000 current, you know, zero dollars following that. To me, I mean, you know, blight removal and those programs, you know, should be used in collaboration with any kind of surveillance program that we use to fight crime. And so, what I'd like to see is a holistic approach, where we have dollars funded and appropriated, you know, whether they're out of the mayor's office or anywhere throughout city government, that is consistent and is about prevention.
Through the chair, I just want to indicate that on page 33-9, you'll see where we've moved those funds from the General Fund to a new fund. So those programs are still being funded, they're just no longer reflected in the General Fund. So on page B33-9, you'll see that there's $75,000 that's been in the budget for Angels Night, and there's $75,000 for Motor City Makeover. So those initiatives are still being funded, it's just that those dollars have moved to a different fund, which is why you no longer see them reflected in the General Fund.
I appreciate that, thank you. Through the chair, I think to kind of also address, in a way, some of what you're discussing about the petition to Neighborhoods. So for one, our office, immediately after the State of the City, was flooded with calls from people who said, "We want this in our community. We want this, we want the ability for police to be able to see if something happens, that they can tap into additional cameras to go back and see the vehicle, get more information that could help them solve a crime in their neighborhood." We actually received a lot of calls about that. So what they, the district managers decided to do, was that they wanted to reach out to neighborhood block clubs directly, engage, "Who, if this is something that you want in your community, sign up, let us know. Let's begin organizing what support there is for this." And I think even, so that was the key reason why they did that. And, you know, I think it's just a way to organize what block clubs and what communities really wanted this initiative in their community. I think the next part, too, I think, in terms of the framing, I think the chief will really do a good job of explaining this in more detail. But I think, for one, police are looking for tools they can use to drive down crime in our city, and the cameras are a tool that will allow them to go back and gain as much information as they can to solve a crime, which of course, is the number-one thing that I'm sure all of us are concerned with. And I appreciate also the need for clarity on policy, which we are very, which I think is a policy that makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. And so, I think I disagree on, maybe on the rollout. And so, you know, I feel, remember Tate, you know, eloquently spoke to the fact that, you know, since this program has been announced, and, you know, to some degree, I believe it's something that's been floated out there for a while now, you know, well before the State of the City is, you know, in terms of, you know, community-wide meetings and things of that nature, they've been pretty nonexistent. And so, when I heard from residents that were concerned about asking that their signature, you know, go on a petition, you know, what I immediately felt is though, the way this is being rolled out is that, when you're ready to engage the community, you already have gathered a number of signatures showing the support ahead of time without a full, true community engagement strategy. And so, I think we differ on the strategy in terms of the rollout, and I think it probably could have been a little bit better. And so, I know it will be better moving forward. And that's what I'm hearing at this table and so forth. And so, moving along, aside from that, I want to be clear, because in budgets, oftentimes, you hear things that are written like miscellaneous, and I just, you know, want to make sure that I'm clear about, you know, exactly, when I see a expected revenues doubling, like on B33-5, that I'm clear as to miscellaneous, because, to be quite honest, I think that category term should probably be removed into something else that's a lot more clear, because, you know, these budgets are also being viewed by the general public. And so, when they see things like miscellaneous, you know, I think it draws up some immediate questions. So can you explain the B33-5, the doubling from 85 to 150?
Yes, through the chair, what you see here is the increase that is anticipated in Angels Night and Motor City Makeover. So we're anticipating increases in the donated funds for those two programs, so that's the increase that you see reflected here in miscellaneous.
Okay. That could just have been spelled out a little easier in the budget, so I had to make that comment. And then, I will submit additional questions in writing. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Member Eos.
Thank you. I do want to take a second and just clear something up, though. Yesterday, Board of Police Commissioners was here, and we did ask them about, obviously, the policy and all of that. They said yesterday that they hadn't seen a policy, so I don't even think they know that they're the ones that's supposed to make the policy. So that's problematic in itself. So I just want to put that out there. But switching gears, last year, we approved the funds for the second lobbying firm, and so, where exactly are those funds located in the budget? And then, we need an update on what issues that the company has been representing the city's interests on since their contract began.
Through the chair, first, the budget for lobbyists is in the Law Department?
Okay.
So it's not in our budget?
Got it.
But a number of areas that, I mean, I don't know, Hakeem, do you want to take this?
Through the chair, I've been looking at some dates to try and get the second firm in to do a update for the council. I was trying to wait a little bit till the budget period had closed down, but I have been in contact with them, and looking at some dates coming up in the next month or so.
That's good, but while you do that, we need to have an actual printout on the issues that they've been representing the city's interests on, and how successful have they been in lobbying on those interests? Because obviously, there's a dollar amount that's attached to it, so I'd like to get that in writing.
Hold on for one minute.
I have a question later, if you can.
Okay. Who are you working with to get the dates? Are you working with them?
Madam Chair, I'm working with our Director of Legislative Affairs to schedule...
They need to work with my office, too, if they're coming to the table.
Oh, I have a scheduled date, I'm just trying to get their availability so I can come back and propose something.
Through the chair, we will have this handled quite quickly.
I just want to just say that.
Yeah, absolutely.
My second question, though, is with current events. So with the closing of the incinerator yesterday, I know the mayor had been quoted saying that he was excited about that, and that's fine from the environmentalist standpoint. My concern, though, is the costs that are associated with it, because we saw today that there was something issued that GFL, the folks that utilize that service, their trash will be, their pickup will be delayed. And so, we need to really start talking about what the unforeseen costs are going to be to the city. Do we have security costs for the building? Is it cleanup cost? Because with that happening yesterday, I know that's not something we planned for in this budget. So, again, I'm, from the environmentalist perspective, this is a good thing, but the residents are going to have to start to absorb that cost. So where are we at there?
Through the chair, your question is absolutely spot on. We have been, so we had a few days to begin kind of kicking the tires and looking at all of this. First of all, our rates, trash rates will not go up, they're locked in for the life of the contract through October of 2021. They are in the process of transferring the contract that they had with us to another company. The other aspect of this, in terms of the additional cost for the building, John Primack, who has been with the city for a long time, part of the agreement actually contemplates what, if indeed, we ever had to do anything with the building. So there are funds set aside, and there's also an escrow account that has some funding in it. So right now, we are diving into this, in terms of what does this all mean? Because what we anticipate is that this will, we will be responsible for this building very shortly. But again, thankfully, there is money that had been set aside early on to begin to address this. But now that they have come out and have made a public announcement, I know John actually had a meeting with them late yesterday to continue to work through details. I believe that he would be prepared, very shortly, to come and speak to the body about all the different due diligence. But it seems like, with the few days that we've had between law, and Gidra, and Brad Dick and their team looking at this, seems that this was a really well-fought-through agreement early on to protect us.
So, Ms. Tadomire, where are those funds, the set-aside dollars, reflected in the budget?
Through the chair, I'd have to get back to you. I think they're part of non-departmental's budget, but I want to confirm that.
So can you get that, how soon can you get it to us?
I should be able to have something early next week.
John should be able to get something.
Can we get it before this week is over?
Through the chair, I'll see if I can get that information as soon as tomorrow.
I'm going to formally request, making a motion, that we get that information before this week is over.
Motion has been made. Any discussion on the motion? Any objections to the motion? Motion is approved. Thank you. Member, I'm sorry, President Protim Sheffield.
Thank you, Madam President. So first, just wanted to kind of piggyback on Member Tate regarding the surveillance test.
technology. Wholeheartedly support everything that was stated already. And even with an independent body as the police commission, I still believe that the legislative body plays a huge role in it. There are cities all across the country now. The city council has made legislation to mandate transparency, request public hearings. Even though we don't approve the policy, we are involved in overviewing it and making sure that the public is aware. And so even during this process with the budget, I'm still not all the way comfortable with policies presented to us with us not having actual legislation in place to actually figure out how this actually works. So I just wanted to state that for the record. Also, with the Dons, I don't see the salaries reflected in the budget. Wanted to get clarity to make sure that there is no increase in the salaries for the Department of Neighborhoods through the next four fiscal years.
Two percent.
Right. I know through Member McCallister's questioning, you guys are going to submit their actual salaries. But is there an increase proposed through the next couple?
Through the chair, if they would get the citywide increase, so the 2%.
Okay, outside from that.
Nothing outside of that at all.
Okay. Okay. And then the last question is, there is a new position created, the Financial Empowerment Coordinator. And I think it's under the Grants Fund. Can you speak to what that position is?
Through the chair, yes, I can. And I think it -- I'm not sure if she's had an opportunity to come here and speak. But she works in the mayor's office. It was a position funded by the cities for financial empowerment. And the key things that she works on, she's -- one of her big initiatives is she's taken over the tax foreclosure prevention workshops and the connection that we have with the treasurer's office. She works very closely on the earned income tax credit incentive. So that's a big initiative for us because there's so much opportunity for Detroiters who don't know that we can actually be getting a lot more money back for their tax returns, even if they're not working and even if they typically would not file. She works with, very closely with UCHC and other community groups that focus on issues like foreclosure and other issues like that. And then she's working with Bank On and the Financial Empowerment Center. She really coordinates a lot of volunteers.
What's her name?
Chelsea.
Okay.
Sorry, Chelsea. But she's beginning to get a lot more known in the office. She's been -- she's actually very -- she helped coordinate the expungement fair that we had this past Saturday.
Okay. All right. So we just submitted some questions in writing about that position and more information. And if we have another round, I ask additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Castaneda. Castanada.
Guys, we're going to add it phonetically so we can all say it together. Castanella Lopez. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Thank you. Awesome to see women at the table. So I think, just really quickly, I think some of the differences perhaps in what you're hearing from some colleagues, but I know for me personally, is as it relates to the agency goals of the administrations. And so on that, number one says improve public safety. For me, in terms of the city of Detroit, and I've said this multiple times, I think administration is great and very pragmatic in terms of executing things, but there still really is a broader lack of vision and goals in terms of what type of city we want to be. And so for me, my goals for the city are really about how do we increase economic opportunity? How do we promote wellness and health? How do we increase access to basic city services? And for me, all of those things are about preventing crime and investing in people. And I think the budget is a moral compass, so to speak, and it reflects our values. And I know for me, there's a little bit misalignment in terms of my values and what I'd like to see prioritized. And so just really quickly, as it relates to the surveillance camera program, I know last year, we had asked a question to the mayor's office about new expenses and capital funding requests. And the response we had received was Homeland Security added five general fund positions to allow for expansion of Project Greenlight and additional surveillance footage available to real-time crime center and Homeland Security Intelligence Specialist. So my understanding that there already is, Homeland Security is already engaged in watching these cameras, and that there was eight police crime analysts added last year in terms of the budget. I know I asked a question back then, and I stated last year that I wasn't as supportive of that. And we asked and were able to get funding to do the MSU study, which I think is still currently underway as it relates to Project Greenlight. My understanding is that the preliminary findings of that study have already kind of said that the program isn't really that effective at reducing crime, yet now we are here wanting to see that expansion. And I think it's important to realize that there's already, what is this, 13 positions, five Homeland Security, eight within police department that are already monitoring these cameras, similar to Councilmember Benson's concerns. It is crazy to me that we have Homeland Security accessing this information as the Chair of the Immigration Task Force. That is incredibly threatening to the community. We have on the books already anti-profiling legislation, which I believe says that we shouldn't be sharing information with other entities, and we're working to strengthen that as well. So it is concerning that it's already happening, and there's not an official policy in place, and that we're looking to roll out and further expand it. So I just want to get clarity. I know we haven't gotten exact budgetary amounts in terms of how much is actually appropriated to this. So the question we asked in several memos is how much in any department is being appropriated, staff and capital-wise, to any type of surveillance program? And so I know Ms. Stoudamire pointed me to, I'm trying to remember whether it was the mayor's budget or the DPD budget, that there's a proposed 21 new staff positions to go to DPD specifically for the surveillance program. So I want to know, as it relates to that, those 21 positions plus these, I guess, the five and the eight, what is the total capacity, I guess, that you're looking at? Because we heard the mayor say, I believe, 1,000 cameras, 1,000 intersections or cameras, I don't remember exactly, that he was looking to roll out. Looking at, again, trying to guesstimate the numbers based on what I'm seeing in the budget here, is that it looks like it's close to 30-something positions that will be working on this. And again, for me, it's important, and to Councilmember Leavon's point, I really appreciate it, because when you ask the community, when I go out door knocking, I've walked my district almost three times now, the number one concern I hear is around blight remediation. And the second to that is about access to services for kids and for the seniors. And while people want to live in safer communities, blight is a way to get to that. Access to quality recreation and parks is another way to get at that. So it's really about what type of city are we trying to create versus reacting out of fear and saying, and really, something that's more politically sexy in a panacea, let's put cameras so people feel safe. A lot of that is purely perception and doesn't actually translate to empirical data that says that this is an effective method. So I know that I would do not support without having legislation on the books. I would like to see those monies put into supporting parks and recreation, to supporting the Department of Transportation, to really improve quality of life, to supporting blight remediation. But I want to hear exactly, what is the full, robust plan being proposed? Because there's been some inconsistencies and a lack of clarity, even if you don't have the numbers yet.
Through the chair. And I certainly appreciate every question that you've asked and what you're bringing up. I think that, first of all, I think it's important to say that we're going to disagree on whether Project Greenlight is effective. Because when you actually look at the numbers and you look at things like carjackings and reduction and the impact that it's actually having.
I just want the empirical study that proves that versus the anecdotal words.
Through the chair. And I think that's something that you really should be taking on with the police department. When they get here on Monday, they should come armed with all the different information that you're requesting, because those questions absolutely make sense. And I think when you look at what we're doing holistically, I think while right now, we are talking about Project Greenlight, we've also been here talking about programs like Goldline, which is about creating after-school options for families and kids.
Sorry, Dr. Stoudamire, because there's limited time. And so I just want, if you guys could speak to the program specifically and how robust you're thinking of, how many staff positions total? What other resources being put towards that?
Yeah, through the chair. I think that's something that we have to wait for Monday and get that information when DPD is here.
Okay. So is it safe to assume, though, that there currently already are 13 positions at least that are working on the camera surveillance programs that relates to Greenlight, based on last year's answer to the budget memo?
Yeah, through the chair. I prefer to defer to the police, chief of police.
Okay, got it. Cool. And that's not to cut you off. I know there's other great programs.
No, I appreciate it.
Just for time's sake, in terms of the actual, because people keep saying it's effective, and I appreciate that, we've done research, there's some that say it's effective, none in terms of violent crimes, though. It's effective when you put it into parking structures and you have additional police officers. But in terms of carjackings, gun crimes, et cetera, et cetera, I have yet to see the study. So I would love to see that study rather than anecdotally, because I keep hearing, and the mayor used a story, and I think it's wrong and disingenuous and misleading to the public to say this is actually reducing crime in the city, when maybe it's helping to catch criminals, which are two different things. So with that, Madam Chair, the only other question I had was, well, actually, sorry, we're submitting a memo with follow-up questions. This was just relate to the viaduct lighting program, which again, I think is another way to reduce crime or prevent crime. So I'm talking to PLA and to PLD. It wasn't clear initially who was responsible for the lighting in the viaducts. And honestly, it's still not clear if there's any existing legal agreements with the railway companies. So we're asking Law and OPD to look at that. But I'm curious, to what extent the administration has looked at developing a policy as it relates to lighting in the viaducts? We've kind of been getting funding on a year-by-year basis to fund Light 2 or 3, and that's been helpful, and we appreciate the support on that. But given the scale, there's like 60-something that cut across District 6, District 5, 4, and 3. I'm curious, have you guys given consideration or started drafting a plan that relates to a more comprehensive strategy of lighting viaducts in the city?
Through the chair. I can't speak to that as well. I mean, I think PLA would be more.
Thank you, Mr..
So I'm lying, I can't answer that question at the moment, but I will find the answer for you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wiley. So Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to request, well, actually, we're going to put this in a closing resolution. I will request a first motion to request from the administration, any existing plan or framework that exists as it relates to the viaducts, and clarification about if the lighting is actually the railways' responsibility or if it's the city's. Because if it's the railways, then great, we can give them the cover and it's not on us, which I really think it should be. So move, Madam Chair.
Motion has been made. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Chair, the second motion, and well, we're going to give the memo on Friday for a closing resolution, but I am going to request to be put in the closing resolution and urging that the administration work on developing a comprehensive lighting plan for the viaducts in the city.
Motion has been made. Any further discussion? Any objections?
Got it. Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. So first of all, before I go to budget questions, yesterday, an announcement was made by Detroit Renewable Energy that the incinerator was closing. My question is to you, if you can give us any update on how that will affect the city as far as garbage? And I am going to ask for, and I've already asked for an appearance request, but I don't know if you have any information you can give us today as far as how will it affect the city's garbage being picked up? Because we know it went to the incinerator, and they did what they did as far as, the incinerator's actually, I'm sorry, the incinerator actually did the, if there was garbage that needed to be recycled, they did all of that. And so how will that affect the city as far as the garbage that was going to the incinerator? And will that have any effect on our budget?
Through the chair. It will not. Our contract is locked in through October of 2021, and rates will be locked. Trash will be going to another, they're transferring our contract to another company. But it should not impact the pickup, right? It just means that that trash will be handled once it's picked up to another company. And I believe that they use a landfill outside of the city of Detroit. So that's what we know right now. And I think it'll be great for experts with more information to come before you to really get full questions.
All right. Member Benson.
Real quick, so we're having Gidra come to Public Government Safety on Monday to explain the hauling contracts versus the actual pickup contracts. The pickup contracts, pickup from the home, the hauling contracts are the ones that take it either from the waste energy plant out to a landfill or just from the waste energy plant into the incinerator. That's the actual, so two different contracts. And we'll talk about that on Monday.
Okay. All right. Because we did send something for all of the above to Gidra, Mr. Bonbridge, and all of them to come before council. So, okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move to the budget. First of all, and I asked a question with the last department that was here in regards to tasks. How many tasks do you have working in the mayor's office? And where does their salaries fall?
Through the chair. I believe we have one task. Is that right, Dana?
I believe it's three.
I'm sorry, three total. Three total. So I'm sorry, let me also say, the Homeland Security has three tasks.
So there's only three tasks in the mayor's office, and the three tasks are fall up under the Homeland Security?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay. So on page 35, 33-4, under the mayor's office, 33. Under salaries and wages, there is, for the recommended budget of 2020, about $200 shy of $1 million. Where is that increase? What is that increase? Under salaries and wages.
Yeah, through the chair. That increases as a result of the additional positions that were added to Homeland Security. So there are six additional Homeland Security positions that were added.
Okay, so the $800,000 is going to Homeland Security?
Madam Chair, yes. There, the six positions for Homeland Security in their general fund budget, and then there's also an increase in their grant funding as well. So when you add the two amounts together for Homeland Security, that accounts for the bulk of the increase that you see in salaries and wages. It is not related to the mayor's office appropriation for their executive staff, but it's more so related to Homeland Security and grant funding.
So then, under the general fund, there was an increase on page 33-6. There is an increase there under salaries and wages. Under general fund, the mayor's office, roughly $700,000.
Yep. Through the chair. Madam Chair, that's the same thing. So what you see here under the general fund.
Because, and I'm not trying to stop you, but it's under salaries and wages on page 33-4. And then when you go to page 33-6, it's there as well. So.
Yes. Let me explain, Madam Chair. What you see on page 33-4 is a summary of all of the funds within the mayor's office. And there are a total of five funds that make up the mayor's office. So what you see on 33-4 summarizes all of the funds. But then, when you turn to 33-6, you see the detail at the individual fund levels. So what you see on 33-6 is the increase that's almost $700,000 in salaries and wages under general fund. That's directly related to the positions that were added to Homeland Security. And then below that, you'll see that there's an increase in salaries and wages for Homeland Security grants, as well as there's an increase in the mayor's office and their grant funds, as well as an increase in donated funds. So you see the individual funds have increased that add up to the total that you see on
Mr. Corley?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you understand that? Because I can get a better understanding from you if you understand it, because I don't understand it.
Let me take a look at it as well, and I'll work with Ms. Stoudamire and get back with you.
I need a better understanding, because I do not have an understanding of that at all whatsoever.
And Madam Chair, I want to add, I recognize that there has been some confusion with having this summary of all funds as well as this breakdown by fund. So going forward, I'm suggesting that we will no longer include the all-funds rollout, because I think it does create a little bit more confusion. So we'll have just the one that will break it down by each one of the funds instead of having this rollout, because you do end up asking the same questions just because it's presented two different ways.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I will be leaving in about an hour to take my mom to a doctor's appointment. So please get me until tomorrow to get that report out on the council and mayor budgets.
Okay, not a problem. Not a problem. So there has been different positions that have been added into. So there has been different positions that have been added into the budget. And were those positions added, and I know Council President Potem asked about some of the positions that was added, but do we have any positions that were added in here as a result of the emergency manager adding positions into the mayor's office?
You mean this year? Through the chair.
He added positions when he was here, and they followed up through in this budget.
Through the, Madam Chair, I don't believe we do, but I'd have to go back and see specifically what positions he may have added. But we didn't add anything consciously related to that, so.
Okay, thank you. It is 12 o'clock, and we have quite a few, because I have some more questions in writing. Member Benson, we have quite a few, as a matter of fact, we have ten, eleven public comment cards. So we will be here past 12 o'clock, you all, because it's 12 o'clock now. So, Member Benson.
All right, through the chair. So one last question, just looking at lean processing, something we don't talk about often. Half a million dollar score goes towards that program. What's the value add? What have we been able to do to actually reduce the cost on processes, and how have we found efficiencies in some of the other processes that the lean team's been a part of? Just justify the half million dollars.
Through the chair, I believe they have more than, more than demonstrated their value. They work with individuals in departments to train them on lean processes, bring them through, they have each person they work with, and I think it's like thirty-some each session. Each one of them has a project that is either related to efficiencies or improving customer service. A really great example is, I think they worked with the water department on, on improving the intake time, so that people aren't sitting in the water department as long getting their, you know, getting, getting their questions, their bills asked. They vastly improve their customer service model. There are examples of that across the administration, and I'd love to actually give you an update, because it is fascinating, the amount of work that they have been able to do across the administration.
And through the chair, there's such a, we could, we should be doing a report on that, because they've totally changed how we work and are going department by department, and then training people in departments, so that they end up being, being able to really push process improvement internally, without it having to be driven by them.
Madam President, motion to request a report from the administration on the lean processing team and its successes and, and its wins.
Motion has been made. Any further discussion? Any objections? And now, motion is approved.
In addition, request, motion to request a report from the administration, from the OCFO's office on, with a spreadsheet of all the different and details on the different grant, grants sources for the mayor's office.
Motion has been made. Any further discussion? And I'd, and I'd like to know if they also work with council on grants.
Madam Chair.
Member Castaneda Lopez, I was waiting on an answer from Ms. Wiley.
Through the chair, I just want to make sure I understood your question. Are you asking about the Office of Development, if they work with council?
Yes.
Through the chair, I believe they have, and I believe they are eager to continue working with the council on grant opportunities.
Member Castaneda Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just an add, a friendly amendment to the motion, is to make sure that the positions actually funded by grants are also included in that report.
Motion has been made. Any further discussion? Any objections? Motion is approved. Member Castaneda Lopez.
Thank you. Just one more quick question as it relates to the budget on page A54. This is a question we put in writing per the request of Ms. Stottermeyer. And so when we approved last year the UTGO bonds, there was a list of capital improvement projects that were provided. Of those capital improvement projects, there was 1.1 million for corridor camera expansion, 2 million for expansion of real-time crime centers, and another 2 million for the establishment of mini real-time crime centers. I voted against that, because we were told we would not have an opportunity to come back and change these capital projects, but council would have an opportunity to approve contracts later on. I disagreed then and disagreed now, because these don't necessarily reflect priorities in terms of how I felt capital money should be used. But I just want to clarify, because it was stated back then at council, that we would be able to approve the contracts. I just want to make sure, when we spoke yesterday, it sounded like this total of 5.1 million is set in stone, and so we may then vote up or vote down. But right now, based on the approval of the UTGO bonds in the budget, that there's 5.1 million that's already, in addition to the other offices I talked about, that are going towards this surveillance expansion.
Through the chair, yes, that's true. Those dollars have already been appropriated and are reflected in the current year's budget.
Okay, so council has no further leeway to be able to move these funds around?
Council will be responsible for approving the contracts associated with those activities.
But if I wanted to move these funds to another area, I couldn't, or can I?
You would not be able to.
Okay, thank you. I think it's just important to reemphasize that. Thank you.
Let me just ask you this, Ms. Wiley. Has the mayor's office worked to address the citizens' complaints regarding the lack of investment in their communities versus the investments in downtown and midtown? And basically, what is the mayor's office doing? Because I know that the people were put into the D E G C, but what is the mayor's office doing to work with the citizens' complaints?
Through the chair, I think one of our most, outside of what we've been doing on the SNF front, I think that district managers have been our strongest tools for that, in terms of making sure that we are, citizens' complaints are coming in, and not, not just complaints, but I think visions for, for their community and issues in their community, in conjunction with what's elevated by council members here, we are constantly working to address and continue investment. I mean, if you, one example would be that, you know, in District Seven, strong concerns around auto, auto yards that were unsanctioned. We did a moratorium on those. When you look at, I think we, every, there's, there's investment happening everywhere. I think the key thing is that it looks different everywhere, but will continue to grow and change. So for us, it's all about making sure that we are taking steps every single day to, to drive improvement across the city, and we're just going to keep, keep moving forward and keep doing that.
Okay, I'm going to ask you all if you would just stay seated to hear the public comments, as I have every department to do so, and if you wish to comment on the public comments, you can do so, if you wish to. Okay. I'm going to begin with our charter commissioner, Joanne Underwood. And each person will be given two minutes. Joe Griffin, followed by Ramon Jackson. If you guys can take the seats.
Hi, Ms. Wiley, how are you doing? Nice to see you.
You, you don't have to talk and...
No, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ramon.
You don't have to hold it as well.
I don't have to hold it? Okay. Well, I don't know, since y'all have had problems with the mic and stuff.
That's not going to help it if you hold it.
Okay. Yes, I am here to, going over, my observation is that the council has lost a lot of power, it appears. The mayor is, have absolute power, and when you have absolute power, that equals to corruption. There's no way that the mayor or anybody can justify, 824 million dollars of the taxpayer money has been spent on this government, and only 2% going back into the neighborhoods. Also, this big effort to over, over- police our communities without a policy is irresponsible, and it should be illegal for them to go on with this, with that process. So it's simple as this for council. If they don't provide no policy, no funding, that's it. It should be in the discussion. If they're not willing to provide a policy that's going to protect the residents' privacy of the city of Detroit, no policy, no funding. The second thing, the deputy managers. We get a lot of complaints about the deputy manager. I think the deputy manager is not doing a good job. I think they're getting paid way too much money. They also is not effective in what they're supposed to do. The city council's supposed to manage their own districts. We don't need seven district manager. It's just a way for the mayor and his administration to hog up all the money. And if that, and the district managers, are they getting paid out of the neighborhood's budget? I would like to know that. And also, the district managers has duties that I think it's just, it's just not really clear on what they actually do. The residents always say, well, what do the district managers do? The second thing is that we don't have enough investment in the neighborhoods. The city of Detroit is the largest, poorest city in the United States of America, and I hear investments everywhere but in the neighborhood. And so if you want to reduce poverty in the city of Detroit, then we have to start making investment. District Seven, right now, do not, do not have a recreational center. District Four do not have a recreational center. When we have charter commission meetings, we don't even have enough public, public spaces for the public because of this. So we need more recreational centers. We need more money going into the neighborhoods and not downtown, quartile, and midtown. And I am totally against the camera system, because it's over- policing our community.
Okay, thank you. Joe Griffin, followed by Ramon Jackson, followed by Joanne Warwick.
Yes, thank you for allowing this to the public, to pick up on what the sister was just saying, in regards to the amount of money that the city has collected in taxes, over 800 million dollars from people like me and the residents in this room. We realize, from reviewing the budget, that a small percentage of our money is being returned to our neighborhoods and communities. Under the listing of neighborhood and communities, one figure I saw was 7%. And that's, I think, is actually inaccurate, like she said, is more like 2%. Whereas you look at the non-departmental category, which is the departments or the offices that are used to gentrify Detroit, and we see that that department is getting twice, three times more money than the neighborhoods and communities. So if you all, I want you all to consider that if you all are upset about the mayor's office, the mayor's staff getting more money than y'all are, imagine how we feel about y'all using our own money to gentrify us. So we'll use the public record on your vote for this budget to campaign against you from now until the next city election, to show the community who is with us and who is against us. The reflection of your vote will show us that.
Thank you. Ramon Jackson, followed by Joanne Warwick, followed by Ramon. So if we can have those two seats for Joanne Warwick and Ramon. Mr. Jackson?
One of the issues is that if these departments that the mayor is constantly establishing, they're not a part of the charter, y'all shouldn't approve them. Because what stops other elected officials from just creating positions anytime they want to? It would be chaotic. So if that's not a part of the charter, and it's, and everything that's a part of the executive branch is already in the charter, it shouldn't be approved. He creating any type of positions as he deems fit. Homeland Security is a federal agency. How is we talking about city funding for a federal department? Seriously. If the federal government wanted to put more oversight on the city, we know they got the funds. They send funding to us. So that should be denied. And as the brother said, it's not enough of our money coming back to our, to our city, to our residents, not just on services, but in contractual agreements as well. That's how you develop your community, by redistributing your money back through contracts. That's where the bulk of the money at. If that money not being redistributed back to the residents through contracts and through services, that budget should not be approved. And as he said, whoever approved this arbitrarily budget, should, we will be using that to campaign against you all, because it's arbitrary and it's against the people.
Joanne Warwick, followed by Ramon, followed by Frank Hammer. Ms. Ramon here?
Yes.
Can you take a seat at the table, please? And Mr. Hammer, if you can take a seat at the table. Ms. Warwick?
Yes, hello. Two minutes is very insufficient for this, but I appreciate that it's two and not one. You know, the other day, I rode my bike past the incinerator and saw they were building the jail right next to it, and to me, I saw litigation, environmental discrimination. So it's kind of a good thing that the incinerator's closed. I don't like smelling it. I'm concerned, because the mayor and the land bank are mismanaging our public assets. They let the properties rot. I'm also concerned, because when I raised the concern about the MOU several years ago and the vague language about future disposition policies, Ms. Alexis Wiley assured you that the land bank would only be disposing of properties through policies approved by city council. That has turned out to be absolutely not true. I pointed that out to Mr. Craig Folley and said, well, she misspoke. I said, really? And all your attorneys were sitting there, and nobody corrected her. Mr. Duggan also says that they're not going to demolish salvageable buildings. He said that in 2015. I don't agree with that. The Don is terrible at community engagement. I have been urging them to just reach out to all the block clubs when it comes to issues and community engagement around development. They have refused to do it. Jimmy Settles has refused to answer my email from October 30th, after he asked me to put my concerns in writing. But I got a text message about Greenlight, so it is capable to reach out to block club presidents. Greenlight without a policy, absolutely not. We already saw with the land bank, they, you proceeded without a lack of clarity and policy, and we got all sorts of problems and all sorts of complaints and all sorts of unfairness. So, these district managers should not be making more than city council. You have more on your plate. It just seems like, well, anyway, with big, you also have too many high salaries at the land bank, as I already said.
Thank you.
Also, who's funding the chicken dinners?
Your time is up, Ms. Warwick.
I've seen some people contacted by the Don, and then they have chicken dinners.
Thank you.
Who's funding that? And only some people get invited to the chicken dinners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ramon, followed by Frank Hammer, followed by Gary Hennessy.
Yes, my main concern is, how is it that the mayor is also the president of the land bank? That's a problem for me. Also, how is it that the senior citizens are losing their homes because the value of their house, they're playing with those numbers? And then the seniors that's been in those homes for almost 60 years have to go, because they don't even know or realize that their value of their home had went up. The last thing that I want to say is, seniors, seniors, seniors get nothing. I never heard y'all talk about anything. I might throw them a party, but you have to take out a fund for seniors. When they need something, it will be funds there for them. That's it.
Thank you. Member Leyland?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, and so, Ms. Wiley, there's been talk for the last few years about a special office of senior services here in the city of Detroit, and I know that, you know, with the communication we've had around the religious institutions, veteran services, and that there should be room for some type of agency, you know, one-stop-shop type program here in the city of Detroit. And so, could you speak at all to the concerns of the last speaker?
Through the chair, I appreciate everything that she's speaking about with seniors, and one thing, in our office, we have Tara DeBoe, who is a senior advisor to the mayor, and she has championed a number of efforts, ranging from the senior Olympics, ranging from addressing, addressing direct senior issues. But also, I think that as we look at other partnerships that we should be launching, how do we also make sure that we're launching partnerships that focus specifically on some of our senior, senior initiatives and things that are important to seniors? We have many seniors who are also board members on, on a number of city boards, and they'll often elevate issues like employment for seniors and different things that matter deeply to us. So we're really focused on trying to get more partnerships, and I would love to work with, and I know many of you on this council are very focused on that, too, and we look forward to partnerships to, to support them.
Just for the record, in one of the mayoral budgets, there was a senior department, and I don't know if that's what she's referring to, but I am going to just say, we're not going to do colleagues' responses, because we have so many more curves to do.
going to do colleagues' responses because we have so many more curbs to do, and we have a one o'clock committee. Mr. Hammer, followed by Gary Hanifey, followed by Barbara Bearfield.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Hammer. I'm here representing the State Fairgrounds Development Coalition. I come out of Green Acres. And give a shout out to my district representative, Roy McAllister. Uh, I'm here together, together with a, a number of steering committee members. They will be posing questions. I'm giving an opening statement. The State Fairgrounds Development Coalition has been advocating for a forward-thinking of sustainable vision of the fairgrounds. Uh, we've been doing it at meetings with Michigan Land Bank Authority, the Regional Transit Authority, the Wayne County Executive's Office, and the City Planning Department, and we've been doing this for the past seven years. Some of you on the council are familiar with our work. We represent a diverse and broad spectrum of Detroit stakeholders, of neighbors and businesses within a mile radius of the fairgrounds on both sides of Woodward, as well as interested parties north of Eight Mile in the tri-county region and the state. Our award-winning conceptual plan for the fairgrounds, called Meta Expo, was born from extensive community input and professional expertise. It stands for Michigan Energy Technology Agriculture Exposition, and can be found on the internet at myfairgroundsfuture.org. It brings together seven elements, which are identified by urban planners as essential for cities wishing to be players in a 21st century global economy. They are: transit-oriented development, renewable energy technologies, green economy jobs, a regional tech center, year-round exposition center, and placemaking via historical preservation and urban agriculture, which includes arts, culture, and heritage. We view this enormous parcel of land as a gateway to Detroit that shows the world the best of what we have to offer, honoring the past and serving the present, and paving the way for future generations. We welcome the opportunity to meet with each one of you to present what Detroiters consider the most viable plan for the sake of the city's future, not just for the next few years, but for decades to come. Thank you.
Gary Hanifey, followed by Barbara Bearfield, followed by John Campbell.
Uh, my name is Gary Hanifey. I'm also here representing the State Fairgrounds Development Coalition. Uh, I've been a resident of Detroit for more than thirty years, currently in the University District, involved in many community projects and, with the, uh, community association and with the local churches in the area. The state, the state fairgrounds has been split into two properties. The first is sixteen acres along Woodward and, um, along Woodward and State Fair for Magic Plus LLC, and secondly, for a hundred and forty-two acres for the city. We recently learned that the city has already approved a site plan for the sixteen acres, and that the closing date with the Michigan Land Bank Authority for that portion is set for April 10th. So, here's some other questions to consider. Has the city council seen the plan? Has it weighed in on the plan? Has it been evaluated from the vantage point of its impact on the city's portion of the fairgrounds? How does that plan fit into an overall vision of the future of the fairgrounds and the future of the city? Are there any provisions for community input on this very critical stretch of development along the historical byway that is Woodward Avenue? So, we ask you to consider those questions.
Thank you. Barbara Bearfield, followed by John Campbell, followed by Peter Rose.
Thank you very much. My name is Barbara Bearfield. I'm also here representing the State Fairgrounds Development Coalition. Um, I've lived in, in Detroit for over forty-five years. Most of that time has been in the Palmer Woods area for thirty-one years, and the Palmer Park State Fairground area for the remainder of that. I have been very active in my neighborhood, the Palmer Woods Association, as well as on a board member for People for Palmer Park, helping to revitalize the park and the community that I live in. My question regards the plan for the hundred and forty-two acres that the city will be taking ownership of on April 29th. So, the closing date between the city and the land bank is scheduled for April 29th. Does the city council know what's in the city plan? Last week, the DEGC presented the city's portion of the fairgrounds as, quote, "the Hope Diamond," unquote, of industrial sites. Plans are already underway to convert our gateway to Detroit and centerpiece of this region into a manufacturing facility. The announced motive has been job creation, which of course is very important. We support that. By their own pronouncements, they aim for seven jobs per acre. Has the city elevated this plan in the context of what it wants to see at this historic designated, designation site? Has the city council weighed in with alternative proposals and their job generation capacity? Professional evaluation of the job generation, generating capacity of the Meadow, Meta Expo Plan, which the community has supported, which we're putting forth as our concepts. This proposal sets it at three to four times what the mayor and the DEGC aspire to with their plan. Manufacturing at the site could work if it's part of a larger concept of a regional destination with multiple uses for the site.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
John Campbell, followed by Peter Rose, followed by Jeffrey Jones.
Yes, my name is John Campbell, and I also am a member of the State Fairgrounds Coalition. And I will continue the questions that we were raising. If there is to be an industrial site, will it be green manufacturing? And will it be green products? In any event, uh, we would like to make sure that the site doesn't end with the Hope Diamond What mechanisms in the city council putting, is the city council putting in place for robust grassroots input for the site's development? At one time, the city planning department under Mary Scotts had a robust plan in place for a series of community design charades, and a neighborhood advisory council in the early stages of planning. Will the council, city council insist on including this in their budget? Will monies be made available to make this kind of engagement with community stakeholders possible? The SFDC and other community voices need to meet with decision-makers during the planning process. Who will they be? The mayor's office? DEGC? The city planning department? General Services? Who will be the point person, who will be representing the mayor's office?
Mr. Rose, followed by Jeffrey Jones, followed by Karen Hammer.
My name is Peter Rhodes. I'm a proud Detroit resident of over forty years, living in District Two. I've been active in the Green Acres Woodward Civic Association, in the Green Acres Woodward Citizens Radio Patrol, and I sit on the board of both organizations. I'm here today representing the State Fairgrounds Development Coalition. The tentative budget allocates approximately one million dollars per year for minimal maintenance of the fairgrounds. Does that include both portions of the site? The Magic Plus LLC portion and the city of Detroit's portion, or just one or the other? Will Magic Plus LLC pay the city for maintenance of its portion of the site? Has the city performed an, an inventory and building assessment at the fairgrounds? One of the key features of the site are its historically designated buildings, including the Coliseum and the Cow Barn. In the last ten years, ever since Governor Granholm shut down the state fair, the state has paid that much money per year for minimal maintenance. The buildings have been allowed to deteriorate. If those buildings are to pay, play a key placemaking role in the site's future development, what provisions are being made in the budget to rehab the buildings? Or, is the city cosigning these historic buildings to blight so that tearing them down will be justified on account of blight? Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jones, Karen Hammer, Cindy Dyer, and that is our last public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Jones. I'm a proud resident of Hope Village for over half a century. And related to the fairgrounds, we have been told by Kim Tandy and other city officials that until a new development goes up on the fairgrounds, other one-time uses of the fairground site would be supported. So far, that means a parking lot for the PGA Tour this summer. So, here are our questions. Are there other plans to solicit interim use proposals for other local Detroit-based entrepreneurs and nonprofits, for example? Will rehab work be required at the site to make these interim uses possible, and are resources being thought about to make that a reality? Has city council considered how these interim uses could help generate income for our city to help defray the costs of maintaining and rehabbing the fairgrounds? And more specifically, related to the income that we're going to see from the PGA tournament, has there been any discussion about a community benefit for those residents who sadly won't be able to afford to volunteer or attend the event, but will have to look at cars and limousines parked on Palmer Park and State Fairgrounds, and see no tangible benefit for those citizens who remain here through the good times and the bad? Thank you.
Karen Hammer and Cindy Dyer.
Good morning. I'm Karen Hammer. I've been a resident of Detroit for over forty-five years. I reside in District Two. I've been active in the 12th Precinct Neighborhood Coalition for nine years, and the vacant house task force of that coalition for six years. And I've been a past president of the Board of Green Acres Woodward Civic Association. The mayor's office says that he wants to sell the entire site to one developer. But there are alternatives which city council should consider. We agree there should be one master plan, but it could comprise multiple local entrepreneurs who have already come forward with their proposals. They are: a tennis facility for Detroit-wide children, based on the program currently at Palmer Park; gymnastics for youth, Wendy Hilliard Gymnastics Foundation; police athletic league-type program for youth that is backed by Adidas and Nike and promoted by Olympic athletes; rock climbing, hockey-playing, and virtual entertainment complex with futurist, futuristic entertainment venues; horse shows and exhibitions; restoration of the historic buildings; horsepower, which gives youth in the city the opportunity to learn and grow working with horses; the Detroit Music Hall of Fame to include, uh, rock, house, electronic, soul, jazz, blues music, and more; Detroit's past and future talents, present talents; a historic classic car venue and museum, starting, as a starting point of the Woodward Dream Cruise. And I have a whole list here, and I will be happy to pass this list out to city council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Dyer?
Yeah, I'm finished with Joanne Warwick's statement. She wants Ms. Wiley to explain what the real estate committee is, when and where does it meet, and why isn't it open to the public? Ms. Wiley, do you, if you can explain that? She's here at the table. And also, that nuisance abatement program where you're taking vacant houses with the nuisance abatement program. Joanne said that's illegal. I, I just want to mention, I, I don't know where you are in this, um, budget process, but I'm not satisfied with the structure of our government. I, uh, like, the minutes, you can't, there's no minutes posted online, and there's really no, no minutes to just take the vote and record that. So, you have to look at the videos to see what you guys have talked about, and I imagine you might like to be able to look at more detail yourself in writing. Uh, the charter's been meeting, and they've, you've had, the media department has recorded those big meetings of the whole, but nobody's recording the small committee meetings where they do a lot of their work, and there's no minutes of those put online anywhere. And, uh, I, I'd like to see you put a link on your website to the charter, that DetroitCharter2018.com website, but that should be linked from your website to theirs, or, or put the videos right up on your, uh, website. And, uh, the public hearing's coming up on the water main, and I read it and talked to some people at the, uh, the water department. There's, uh, the intention is to replace the main and then up to the water stop to get rid of the lead. And for probably maybe a thousand dollars more for most homes, you could tunnel into their house and bring them a, a copper line or, or even a, I don't know if they use packs underground, but bring that all the way into the house rather than dig up that water stop. I did this all on my own property, and it was hell. So, I would suggest that you come up with some money to help people put that water line all the way into their house from the water stop instead of, uh, assume, and that'll increase their value, make them more loyal residents.
Your time is up, Ms. Dyer.
And be better for the city as a whole.
Thank you. Your time is up. Okay, um, that public comments is over. If there is nothing else to come before this body, um, this meeting will, will stand in recess until 2:00 P.M.
Present.
Councilmember Spivey.
Uh, councilmember Spivey has indicated he will not be present.
Councilmember Passiato Lopez.
Here.
I'm sure you have a camera.
Thank you. There being a quorum, the meeting is in session. Uh, approval of the minutes, please.
Show move.
There being objections, that motion passes. Uh, anyone here for public comment? Nope. Okay. Public comment is now over. Um, under unfinished business, line item number one is from council president Pro Tim Sheffield regarding the historic Virginia Park Street Repair Grant. Uh, we can receive and file this response from the department.
Show move.
There being no objections, that motion passes. Line item number two, under new business, is petition 746, request to hold the Purple Stride Detroit 2019 at Milliken State Park on May 11, 2019, from 7:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with temporary street closures. Uh, motion to approve and move to new business if there's no issues.
Show move.
There being no objections, that motion passes. Line item number three is petition 585, request to hold rendezvous Scott Jamboree at Rouge Park on September the 27th through the 29th from 4:00 p.m., starting at 4:00 p.m. on September the 27th, 2019, and ending on September the 29th, 2019, at 11:00 a.m. with various times and street closures. Uh, we have received, uh, various approvals. Motion to approve and move to new business.
Show move.
There being no objection, that motion passes. Under, uh, the contracting and procurement, line item number four is contract number 6001652, a hundred percent city funding. This is to provide, as-needed facility maintenance contractor on behalf of GSD for Detroit Fire Department. The contractor is KEO Associates. Location is Detroit, Michigan. Contract period upon city council approval through January 27, 2020. Contract amount is five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Motion to discuss.
Show move.
Thank you. You can join us at the table.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Uh, my name is Derek Gray. I'm the Assistant Director in General Services Department.
Okay. Uh, anything that we need to know? This is, this looks like just repairs to some of the, uh, fire stations, kind of as-needed basis, but there has been some identified work involved for several listed engines. Is that correct?
Yeah. Um, KEO was, uh, one of three bidders, and they received the highest ranking of all three. They had the capacity to do the job, the expertise. They had the capacity to do the job, the expertise, and they also had a performance bond, able to, so that were the chosen contractor.
Okay. Any issues from my colleague?
Nope.
Okay. And Mr. Teeter?
No.
Okay. There being no issues, motion to approve and move to new business, line item four.
Show move.
There being no objections, that passes. Line item five is contract 6001785, 100% city funding to provide park improvements to Belton, Mark Twain, Chandler, Keaton, Hope, Heckle, Ryordan, Brookins, and Balduc Parks. The contractor is Michigan Recreational Construction. This is Detroit, Michigan. Contract period upon City Council approval through February 28, 2020. Contract amount is $233,688. Motion to discuss.
Show move.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. These parks were funded by Wayne County, so the city will actually be reimbursed for these community-supported improvements.
Okay. And the start of construction will be upon council's approval, I'm assuming, so this particular, okay. Mr. Teeter?
I don't really have anything further. Most of these projects are usually designated by the Wayne County Commission, so this is kind of a pass-through.
Okay, so they actually selected the parks? Okay. Councilmember Casilla Lopez?
No questions.
Okay. There being no concerns or issues, move to approve, line item five to new business. There being no objections, that motion passes.
My head.
Line item number six is 100% city funding, contract 6001909. This is to purchase lawn and landscaping equipment. The contractor is Research Way. This is in Woodhaven, Michigan. Contract period is upon City Council approval through March 14, 2024. Contract amount is $1.4 million. Motion to discuss.
Show move.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This was part of a larger RFP. There were 25 standards that were awarded to four different contractors. Curd doing business as was one, four out of the 25 contracts, and they were, there's no Detroit bidders rooted on that RFP.
So for this particular RFP, there was no Detroit ones?
Correct.
The other ones as well? No Detroit paid on any of the tire packages?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Teeter, any issues?
No. Just to note that you have received the two previous contracts. This is the third and last one.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember, any issues?
No.
Okay. There being no issues, move to approve to new business, line item six.
Show move.
There being no objections, that motion passes. Line item number seven is contract number 6001839, 100% city funding to provide as-needed facility maintenance contractor to provide general contracting services for Gessmane Cemetery. This is for the mechanical HVAC work, electrical plumbing, or whatever is deemed necessary by GSD. The contractor is Simply Construction, and this is in Southfield, Michigan. Contract period upon City Council approval through April 4, 2020. Contract amount is $500,000. Motion to discuss.
Show move.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair. Because of the sensitive nature of the work being done at this location, primarily because it's a cemetery, there were grave markers that had to be dealt with, and they required specialized skills. So there were three bidders. One had no experience. The lowest bidder had general contracting experience, but not the experience associated with dealing with the grave markers and things of that nature. And then the third bidder being simply, they were the second lowest bidder, but they had the skills in both areas as a general contractor, as well as sensitive skills set for dealing with grave markers, and so they were the chosen bidder.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Member Teeter. Mr. Teeter?
Our only question through the chair would be, we currently have a contract with ST Enterprises to manage the cemeteries, and if that contract continues, and are they working with this contractor? How that relationship is, might be structured?
Okay. Do you have an answer to that?
No, I do not.
Okay. If you could provide that in writing to us prior to Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So motion to approve and move to new business, line item seven, pending the responses.
Show move.
There being no objections, that motion passes. Line item number eight is contract number 6001967, 100% city funding to provide labor and parts for the Detroit Diesel Mercedes-Benz engines. The contractor is Wolverine Fright Liner, and this is in Mount Clemens, Michigan. Contract period upon City Council approval through April 1, 2022. Contract period is $150,000. Motion to discuss.
Show move.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This was two bidders for this contract. Wolverine was the chosen bidder for a three-year contract, $150,000. They had the ability to do, for the work that's being done for water pumps and turbo pipes, cooling systems, so they were their most effective choice.
All right. Mr. Teeter?
No.
And councilmember, any issues?
No questions.
Okay. Move to approve to new business, line item number eight.
Show move.
There being no objections, that motion passes. Line item number 10 is contract number 6000121, I'm sorry, line item number nine, 100% city funding amendment, excuse me, amendment number one, to provide facility management services for the 36th District Court. Contractor is Limbach Company. This is in Pontiac, Michigan. Contract period upon City Council approval through June 30, 2019. This is a contract increase for $429,000. Total contract amount is $3,821,577,000. Motion to discuss.
Show move.
Again, this was just an amendment to add more time and money until June 30, and that's all the information I have to share this morning.
Okay. I know in Mr. Teeter's report, just wanted to know the reason for the increase in the cost?
And I do not have to respond. I'm in writing. I do not have that reason.
Okay. Mr. Teeter, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, through the chair. My understanding is there is no increase in the time. This is only an increase in the cost, and it appeared to be related to overtime costs, so you might want to ask for more information on that.
Okay. Councilmember, do you feel comfortable moving this out prior to, or did you want to receive?
I'm okay, Pen, if we get the information prior to next Tuesday. Yeah.
Okay. Can you provide that?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. So move to approve, line item nine, pending the responses. There being no objections, that motion passes. And lastly, well, we have two more. Line item 10 is submitting a resolution authorizing to submit a grant application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the fiscal year 2019 trust fund grant for Farwell Park. And line item 10 is a resolution to name the playground at Sawyer Park in memory of Jaden Rankin. Yep, that's what I'm doing now. Motion to discuss.
Show move.
Both 10 and 11.
Yes.
Both 10 and 11. At this time, I do not have a response for 10. I will give a response for 11.
Oh, you know what? I'm so sorry. Motion to remove, line item 10. That was approved last session, so we can actually remove line item 10 from the agenda. There are no objections. And then line item 11 is just to rename the playground, Sawyer Park, in memory of Jada Motion to discuss, 11.
Yes, Madam Chair. This playground was named after Max Sawyer, who was a WWII veteran and was awarded the Silver Star for gallantry. Current policy states that recreation facilities presently named as a memorial to any individual will not be renamed.
Okay. I'm sorry. So we are renaming the park?
We are not.
We are not renaming the park? Okay.
Department policy is not to rename a park that has already been named after a, in a memorial situation for a veteran.
Okay. Has that been relayed back to the petitioner? Because from my understanding, there's been petitions submitted, signatures, and everything.
Yeah, there has been responses, but I'm not exactly sure where that stands in the process.
To the administration?
To the chair, if I may. I am looking at records that Director Anderson did approve or has submitted the materials for the park renaming, and it's on GSD letterhead stating that they would like to rename it for Jada Rankin. However, historically, in the past, when we did have these types of park renamings, we did hold to those standards and policies. However, due to certain circumstances in which we deem necessary the renaming of a park, we may sometimes adhere to certain special circumstances for those. And in this case, the young lady, Ms. Rankin, was horrendously murdered, and so we do plan to rename it based off the information we submitted.
Okay.
Yes, I stand corrected. She's correct. I have to verify that.
Okay. All right. So this is in Member Tate's district, and I think his office would like us to bring this back in one week. So if we can just bring this line item back in one week to allow further discussion with his office as well.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is, I guess, larger question about the naming process. I thought I had heard that it was, like, on hold while they came up with the official policy. So I'm curious, did that official policy roll out? And if so, when was it shared with council? If not, then how, and I'm not in opposition to it, I'm just, so I just, when it's brought back in a week, if we can also get clarification on that.
Administration?
To the chair, the law department has an assignment, I believe it's a joint assignment with LPD. They can speak to it in detail. However, that is currently being reviewed. If you would like some details, I would defer to those departments. But it is currently being reviewed now.
Okay. Thank you. So just, Madam Chair, I would just request, when we bring it back next week, if both LPD and law can have a detailed update on that, because that was my understanding, that groups were quite of on hold in terms of requesting park renamings, because the policy was being reviewed and no park renaming was going to happen. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll bring both this back and then also some responses to get clarity on the status of the renaming of parks. So we can move to, bring this back in one week. There being no objections, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That's the end of the agenda. We already did member reports. I'm sorry, we did public comment. Any member reports?
No.
Nope. All right. I have none as well. So motion to adjourn.
Show move.
Meeting is adjourned.
Having a quorum, President. We will be in session. I would like to ask all that are involved in the Office of the Inspector General Budget Hearing to please come to the table. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you all will give your name and title for the records.
Madam Walker, Office of Budget.
Tanya Stoudamire, Deputy CFO and Budget Director.
Ellen Ha, Inspector General, Office of Inspector General.
Kamal Mayer, Deputy Inspector General.
James George, Agency CFO.
Thank you. Did you have, what's that back there? Oh, okay. Do you have an extra one to give to our LPD department?
Yeah.
Oh, they have one? Okay. Good. Okay. You have a floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually drafted a beautiful speech which would move all of you to tears, but I forgot to bring it. But I can tell you, because I'm the one who wrote it, our office, as you know, was a creation of response by the people of Detroit after a very tragic historical event that the city had to endure. So the Charter created the Office of Inspector General to ensure that the city government and with whom that we contract with maintain honesty and integrity in the government and how we conduct business with the contractors and the subcontractors. The Charter not only authorizes the Office of Inspector General to investigate city public servants, public officials, including elected officials and public employees, but our jurisdiction also extends to contractors and subcontractors. And as this body is well aware, we have been working very diligently to close our reports on the towing matters, and we are currently in the development proceedings of other companies, which this body will, I'm sure, be receiving notices in the next few months. Our office is charged to ensure honesty and integrity of the government. I kind of look at the city as we see the various changes around the downtown and the neighborhoods. The lights are up, garbages are being picked up. It's like a cosmetic lift to the city. But we are charged to clean and cleanse the soul and the spirit of the city, something that is not visible, that is not immediately visible to the people, to the public body. And it is not always the most pleasant job. Our investigation does not always result in no further action. Some of our investigations are referred to local and state, federal agencies. During my last seven months as the Inspector General, I've met with local, federal, and state law enforcement agencies, and we are working hand in hand to eradicate any corruption, fraud, waste, and abuse. Anything that is illegal, we refer to law enforcement agencies, and we work hand in hand with them. As to findings that does not rise to the level of illegality, but we do find that there is abuse, or fraud, or corruption, or waste, we report it, and all of our reports are contained in our quarterly summary. Before I took our, before I took office on August 20, 2018, I understood that the office was a bit behind on the quarterly reports as required by the Charter. So the first thing I did as the new Inspector General was to publish our third quarterly report for calendar year 2018. And when we published that report, I made a commitment to the people of the city of Detroit to publish the quarterly reports timely. And we went back the last several years, and now we are caught up with all of our quarterly reports, including the quarterly reports from fiscal year 17 and 18. So as this body holds the purse string for the city of Detroit, I implore this body that we be funded so that we can participate in our effort to eradicate the blight that may be within and the blight that we may have hired. And just for the, just for the record, I would like to indicate that prior to coming here, I did meet with Ms. Stoudamire, and we are in negotiations, and we believe that we are very close, and we believe that we can work things out. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go with rounds of questions. I'm going to begin with Member Spivey.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Turning on, Brother Kamal. Good to see both of you. Just two questions. On your staffing levels, B-54-7, the two administrative special services persons have been taken away. How would that affect, if at all, your operation?
Actually, go ahead. Through the chair, those two positions are still funded.
Okay.
They're just no longer reflected as permanent FTE positions.
Okay.
But they do have funding in their budget, actually, for three temporary positions.
Okay. It's just, so where would it, we wouldn't, would you see the funding but not positions? Nowhere, we would see positions anywhere? Is that normal?
You would not see the positions for those tasks.
Okay. Is that normal?
We're treating them more, it's similar to how a PSC may be treated in terms of, the funding would be in the budget, but the FTE wouldn't necessarily be counted.
And where would it be under in the budget?
In the budget, it's part of, I think, their...
Contracting line. Okay, sure. Okay.
So if you look on page B-54-4, under professional contractual services.
Okay, got it. All right. Okay.
Thank you from Stoudamire. And then, Ms. Ha, the...
And then, the department proceedings, as you've gone, process, is there room for improvement? Is it, is it, is it okay? Can be improvement? What do you see the department process needing to go?
So, through the chair, as you know, the debarment ordinance was passed shortly before I began my term. So this is our first debarment, and it was our first debarment hearing. And we see some room for improvements within the charter as well as the ordinance. And we will be participating with the Charter Commission. And we are in consultation with the Law Department with respect to amending the debarment ordinance.
Okay. And then, I have so many, but I want to ask, I know you look at vendors and contractors. When they go through all this series of paperwork, is this a part of it? They know what an illegal act could do? Do they know about the department ordinance, the vendors and contractors?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Member Ears.
Thank you. Actually, most of my questions were answered already. But I do think, for the folks that are watching, maybe you could talk about how you process complaints and the manner by which you do that, so.
Okay. So we receive our complaints in different ways, kind of like the way we receive FOIAs. We do have, unlike FOIA, we do have IG hotline. We receive complaints through regular phone calls just to the Office General Main Line. We also have the website where an individual can click on a link and submit a complaint, either anonymously, or they can submit their information.
So if you had to say, what percentage of complaints actually result in an investigation?
That's actually reported in our quarterly reports.
I know, I get it, but the public doesn't get it.
Okay. And we've also actually made the quarterly reports available to the public. So, because the public, as a former FOIA coordinator, the public does have a right to know. And although we cannot share all of our investigative materials and findings for obvious reasons, we do publish the quarterly report to inform the public of the work that we've performed, as well as the summaries of the investigations that we've concluded. And just to let you know that beginning of this year, we conducted as an office, as my being the new Inspector General, we conducted an audit of our office to see how many old files we had had. And because of the switch on the record management system software, we had some of the older files that's left. So we are in the process of closing out some of the files that we are able to.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Prochum.
Thank you, Madam President. Member Spivey asked my question regarding staffing. The only other question that I will ask, based on your report, mostly your complaints are coming through the Internet. So just was curious, do you have any software technology needs that you may be in need of this budget season or forthcoming?
No, we recently, as IG through the chair, as IG Ha mentioned, we recently, two years ago, it's an upgrade, our case management system. And as a part of that case management system, the portal that you see on the website goes directly into our case management system and becomes a complaint. And anecdotally, you know, we've gotten, I won't say, more quality complaints from the web with the switch of the website, the new website. How we were positioned in the old website, if you put in complaint, we were the number one hit. So we got everybody's complaint. We would go in there and daily, we would have 20 complaints coming in off of that. So since the switch in the website, that's down dramatically. We still don't get our best complaints from the website, quite frankly. We get those from departments, we get those from employees, we actually get those from people who take the time to come in. But the level of, I would say, just completely not us complaints have definitely decreased.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilmember Castaneda Lopez.
You were saying correctly, Madam Chair, the last name, Castaneda. Thank you, thank you IG Ha for being here. Just two quick questions. You mentioned that you were talking to the administration about the budget. I wanted to clarify, because in your responses, it was a little bit confusing. It says that you need, the training dollars to be the same in number, question number five that LPD had asked you, that the budget was mended from 14,000 to 7,500. And your response said that you would need that to handle the upcoming potential debarment cases, but then also that was some reduction on your budget for utilities. But then in question six, you say that the current proceedings, department proceedings shouldn't have any effect on fiscal year 2020. And I think I interpreted that as like the towing department piece, but I wanted, okay, I see, yes. Just wanted to make sure. So can you say specifically, has that been committed to, restoring to the 14,000 for training?
Through the chair, I'm so happy you asked that question because I completely forgot about it. So we are currently speaking with each other. I believe that nothing can't be worked out when city agencies and departments join hands. But training is very important. It was something that was self-imposed by my predecessor, James Heath. And I fully intend to continue the training. As you know, we are one of the Office of Inspector General that is nationally recognized. Our office is certified by the National Association of Inspector General. And I'm the actual only person who has not yet been certified by the AIG. So I will have to attend a conference in September and take a test and be certified. But the rest of my staff, including my deputy and the attorney, they are all certified in their profession. So the other thing is, is that in order to maintain our status, that not only requires membership fees, but we also have to have continuing education. So we are required to attend seminars, either by website or through in-person. And I highly recommend that my staff and I attend in-person training because it's knowledge that is common amongst Inspector Generals. And we can always share ideas in terms of how we investigate and approach things. We can always learn from other people's mistakes, other offices' mistakes. And people can also learn from our offices' mistakes. I have a wonderful staff who actually motivates and inspires me to be perfect. I know that none of us are perfect. And I wish that I had become a leader who could motivate and inspire my staff to do the best and to strive for perfection. But in reality, it turned out to be the other way. They inspire me and motivate me every day through their hard work and to their dedication. Some of our auditors and investigators have been asked by other cities around the country to participate in peer review so that they can critique and provide feedbacks to their offices' operation and investigation. And that, to me alone, says quite a bit about the status of our office and the recognition by the National Association of Inspector General. And I would like to maintain that.
Cool, no, that's awesome. Thank you for the detailed explanation as to why it's necessary. So, Ms. Stoudamire, is that a yes confirmed that it's going to be restored to the 14,000?
Through the chair, yes. And the way that we're going to do that, though, is through HR's budget. So HR, this year, we centralized training within the HR budget, with the exception of any specialized training. So based on our conversations, we may have pulled dollars out of their budget that was for specialized training. That was then moved to the HR budget. So we now have to work with HR in order to get those dollars restored.
Okay, got it. I just want to make sure it's confirmed, because if not, then we'll put an executive exception, but it sounds like that's there. And then, can you just briefly explain this utility piece, in terms of the utilities for the building? That was in your responses, well.
Yeah, we're not quite sure how our utilities were cut, but I think we have a mutual understanding that this budget department will not be shutting off our lights or turning off our water.
Yeah, through the chair, the reduction was based on their actuals. So if there's a need to find additional dollars, if their expenses exceed what we have budgeted, then we will address that.
Okay, got it, cool. I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the work that you do. Don't have any questions. All of my questions have essentially either been asked at the table or within the LPD. Wanted to know what the delta was between what you submitted, what you requested, and what was being presented before us as the recommended budget. Just heard that answered, so looking forward to seeing that number being amended as it comes forward in the budget. But again, thank you for the work that you do.
And through the chair, may I just say one more thing? I forgot to mention that our office was invited by the National Inspector General Association to present the debarment issues. So I also think that that says very strong message to, not just to our city, but we plan to put our city on the map for good things, not bad things, on the actions that our office take to make the city better. Thank you.
Well, thank you for representing us, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Benson.
I just want to thank you all for the work that you've done and how you represent the city outside of Detroit and around the nation. But all my questions have been answered. Keep it for good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Leland.
Thank you. So thank you for this opportunity, Madam President. Mrs. IG, the city's second, I believe?
Yes.
Inspector General. I have no questions. I have had all my questions answered here at the table and in the LPD report. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I have no questions, because I know how to find, oh, I'm sorry, did I miss you? Just have an additional question. Okay, hold on for a minute. I don't have any questions. My questions have been answered. When I have a question, I call you all and ask you. And so, thank you so very much for the work that you all do. Member Castaneda Lopez.
Just one quick question, and this is on page 54-4, which I think you partially answered. I just wanted to make sure I understood all the way. Under Professional and Contractual Services, so there's 20,000, then it goes up to 108,795, then back down to 7,500. I heard the explanation for like the moving of some positions, but I didn't hear the overall explanation as to why there's such a significant increase and then decrease moving forward.
Through the chair, the reason for the reduction over the forecast period is consistent with our policy throughout this budget. Over the forecast period, our revenues are only growing by 1%. So there's a reduction to the temporary staff throughout the city.
So I don't believe we saw that, though, in everyone else's budget in terms of Professional and Contractual Services. Like, this is a significant drop. I don't, it would be great if that was consistent, to actually see that in other offices. I know someone already requested earlier the actual report, but this seems pretty significantly different than what we've been seeing in other departments.
Through the chair, that's because, in this instance, except for 7,500 dollars, the amount that they have budgeted for Professional and Contractual Services is related to temporary positions. So in other departments, it may not be 99% of that total amount for Professional and Contractual Services, but in this instance, it is. So that's why you see a significant reduction over the forecast period. So in other departments, where maybe the task funding is a smaller portion of the total, then you're not going to see as dramatic a reduction. But in this instance, because it's pretty much only the temporary staff, then you see a significant reduction.
Got it. Well, then, one more question through the chair to IG Ha, was that the intention, planning its only tasks for like one more fiscal year and then that's it? Are you planning to bring on other contractual workers or other FTEs?
We've actually been approved for an additional task employee this fiscal year. But it is my goal to expand our office, not just to respond to complaints, but to become proactive. I believe that all of our past investigations, what we've learned in terms of what works and what doesn't, and what we shouldn't do and what we should do, those can be applied when we work hand in hand with city departments and agencies. And we've initiated that process already with the Office of, with the Office of Contracts and Procurement. And we wish to increase our working groups so that we can establish and amend different department policies and changes, something that the department is able to work with as well as to be in compliance with the law.
Got it, cool. That's helpful. As you guys have your conversations, I think just following up on this piece, because it sounds like maybe there's a little disconnect there in terms, it sounds like expansion of the office, this speaks to just potential, and I understand why, but I think there's still maybe some disconnect there.
Yeah, through the chair, there's going to be disconnect probably with any department that has a reduction in their temporary funding over the forecast period. So that's something that will be addressed on an annual basis. But right now, that's how we have to reflect in order to balance against our revenues.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to ask my turn.
Okay. Member McAllister, I have you checked. Like you had your turn, I do apologize. Member McAllister.
That's all right. Director Ha, Brother Kamal, thank you so very much. First of all, I want to commend you on the department. From investigative, my investigative background, I look at things and the way you came back with the, your presentation, awesome, awesome. So I just want to say that I'm glad that it was cleared up with Ms. Stoudamire, that you're just working out some things, because when you made that statement, I started wondering, oh, my goodness, what's going on there? So I'm glad of that. But one question I do have is on page 54-7. The number, because you're looking at contractors and the number of cases that come at you, the investigator, and the office investigator, you have two. And I know you stated that you're looking at to expand. Are you looking also to expand that? Because I'm pretty sure that these two investigators are, I would think they are overwhelmed with the number of cases that is coming in. So is that something that you're also looking to expand? And is that something that's going to later come back, maybe for an amendment, to add some additional investigators? Because there's a number of things that's coming out.
We may request to amend our budget towards the end of the year, but for the immediate future, I believe with an additional task employee that has been approved by budget that we can see through at least this fiscal year. But I suspect that as we continue to exercise more debarment proceedings, that we will continue to need additional investigators as well as auditors. And I'm confident that Ms. Stoudamire is very mindful of that.
So through the chair, if we need to come back to this table with a budget amendment, we would do so.
Okay. And through the chair, excuse me, because we have, one of our dedicated TAS is also working as an investigator. We have them seated as a TAS, but they also, so right now, we have three investigators. We've asked for an additional one to, with a legal background, that we're looking to work with the debarment process, so.
Okay, all right. And thank you so much. And again, thank you for what you both are doing. Thank you for the representation, not only within the city, but around the country that you're doing for this. Really appreciate you. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Is that it for McAllister? Any, did I miss anybody? All right. We will now go to public comment. I have two cards, Joanne Warwick and Cindy Dodd. Each of you will have two minutes. And public comment is, cards are cut off.
Is it okay if Ms. Darrow goes first? Can Ms. Darrow go first?
Whoever would like to go first, y'all work it out.
Ellen, I want to thank you for finally giving the report on my complaint, because I had made a complaint about not getting the lot next to me. And that was several years ago. And the woman who did the report, when I kept going back down there trying to get the copy of the report, she said, well, it's on his desk. Well, it never did evidently leave his desk until Ellen got there. But one thing I wondered about that report, it never mentions my name at all. And I'm the one who made the complaint to the ethics board, who shuffled it over. the one who made the complaint to the ethics board, who shuffled it over to the inspector general. And I never did get an answer to about whether, I don't know if you enforced, but it was a violation of equality of opportunity for the first right of refusal to be used by Midtown. And then they buy it for less than I offered, and I had a commercial building next to it. At the time, they said it was commercial, but later, and actually, their taxes of the Peterborough Properties that bought it, it's an LLC that bought Chungs down at the other end of the block for Jim Brady's. And I had always been told that Sue Mosley was also a member of Peterborough Properties. I don't have any proof of that, but they, it's, when I'm looking at the taxes and stuff, they get big tax breaks, you know, they're paying $130 or something for that lot next to me. And Burgess, when Burgess has owned that property, they were paying about 800 a year. And I don't know if that was partly for the demolition costs that were, when they tore down the building in 2006. But it's a problem with what you said, you know, and the policy wasn't fair, but I don't think it's changed. It's like an insider trading type of thing, where certain people get access to foreclosed properties and other people don't, because they take them off the tax. And that's part of Wayne County, but it's something that I want to know, what is my avenue, Ellen, to, I mean, can you guys help me at all get some land? I've got 22 inches along a 70-foot long building, and that's hard to fix that building when you can only get to it from a 14-foot wide backyard, you know? So I would like some help on that. Either that, or I've got to find a lawyer to try and sue, because I think it's illegal.
Thank you, Ms. Dara. Thank you. Ms. Warwick?
Yes, hello, thank you. I do want to commend Ms. Ha. She did a good job at the FOIA department, better than what's happening now. Yeah, I'd like to see some honesty, integrity, more of that in this government, including the real estate committee. One of the FOIAs that I made while Ms. Ha was in charge of FOIAs was for the minutes of the real estate committee. She was told that they don't have any, but I just showed her a copy of minutes from July 14th, 2015, when people who were in attendance included David Williams of the Jet, Dave Minardo, who was making $250,000, Jill Bryant of the Building Authority, Donald Rentser, John Ohana of the land bank, who told me she didn't know what I was talking about when I asked her about the real estate committee. So there's a reason I'm suspicious of this government. And I am deeply concerned about the complaint Ms. Dara made. She originally filed it with the Board of Ethics, claiming that what happened to her was a violation of the Detroit City Charter Declaration of Right Number Two, to ensure the city has a duty to ensure equality of opportunity. But if you're hooking up right of refusal deals with people that nobody knows about, that's not fair to people. Anyway, so Alicia Skilman of the Board of Ethics transferred this to the Office of the Inspector General on November 11th, 2016. I FOIA'd it three times. The first two times, I said it's not done. I have the date it was finished on, or approved on February 13th, 2019. This is not serving the people. Also, I'm a little concerned because the 50% discount violates the Detroit City Charter. Mr. Kamal Marabel, sitting here, got $45,000 off of Boston Edison Home. Now, how can you justify that to a lifelong resident who, say, worked for the postal service, and he gets to be, you know, he gets to be bid up to $90,000 to get the same house? That's not fair. So I'd like to submit that complaint to you. And the nuisance abatement takings are illegal, and I have the documents here. It even violates the state law that provided for the creation of the land banks. And I'll be happy to submit these two complaints to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe they need more people, because it took so long for this report. Or some, there's a problem with James Heath. I'm disturbed. He is now in corporation counsel for Wayne County. Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before this body? If there is nothing else to come before this body, they did not respond, so maybe she will respond to you at another time.
Quiet, please.
If there is nothing else to come before this body, this meeting will stand adjourned.